Actually with the other one, maybe, yes, maybe York.
That's what I was thinking.
That someone just called, okay, it was.
In your room.
What's wrong?
Okay, no, that was just, I was just testing, see if it worked. Righty, hi, are we ready to go? So, good morning everyone and welcome to council meeting for the 18th June. Please join me in standing up. Nkata Kian. Good morning everyone and welcome to council meeting for the 18th June. Please join me in standing up. Nkata Kian.
I can say hello. I can say hello. Kita Tonga.
Yeah. I'm Kina Kina Kuta.
Yeah. I'm a private keeper. And I can hear you.
Good. It's you. And you can. And I can. You know. Oh, yeah.
So this morning I have an apology from the mayor's offices and from councillor Goff for early departure. Councillor Templeton potentially early departure. How long will we finish? Councillor Goff will be joining us on Zoom in the meantime. And councillor Donovan for lateness. Councillor Coke for being just on time.
Yeah.
Councillor Johansson for when it's late. Do I have a move for that? Councillor McClellan seconded by Councillor Henshaw, will those obey, say aye?
Aye.
Against that's carried. Please be diligent about declarations of interest, is there any declarations today? And we move into, welcome Yanni, public participation, so we've got. And we've got a few presenters in the room today. And first up I'd like to welcome Anika Lang and her fellow Hagley College students. Who are here to talk about decolonising place names. Other students are Stella, Ella, Jos, Rin and Lucia. So if you'd like to grab some chairs and come to the table. Thank you for coming in, welcome, nice to see you. So you've got five minutes to talk to us. Just know what your thoughts are. By the way.
Uh, hello everyone, we are students from Hagley College and the concern that we bring to you today is the name of Rollaston being used for one of our avenues and also a statue and obviously like a suburb in Ototahi. And our concern for this is it's named after William Rollaston who was a superintendent of Christchurch and who was also the native affairs minister who organised the assault on Parihaka in eighteen eighty-one. And the invasion of Parihaka is infamous and for being a stain on our history. It was a, it was a symbol of colonial greed in the face of Maori pacifism. And Rollaston also wrote a report that influenced the Native Schools Act of eighteen sixty-seven, which aimed to assimilate Maori children into the Pākehaka society and erase Tāraro as spoken.
It is important to remember our history to avoid making the same mistakes as our ancestors. But by keeping Rollaston's name and literally placing him on a pedestal outside the canopy, so celebrating his violent acts and his participation in the invasion of Parihaka. This immortalises colonialism as it preserves a colonial narrative and structures which continue to influence our model. Is why it's important to remember history without a bias.
The actions we suggest in response to this issue would be to abolish the Rollaston name. Which I do agree with you, whatever the name should be. On a larger scale, we would suggest addressing the issue of colonial place names by holding a citizen's system. What Pākehaka individuals would be given time and resources to come to reform their place names named after violent colonisers as a whole and decide how to proceed.
Rollaston is a particularly horrific example of a wide issue throughout that country. glossing over, dredging our past, how important that task may be. Until looking into this further, we ourselves are not able to involve sense and the invasion of Parihaka. We're inclined to believe that it is the case for most people, sorry, which is why we believe it's important to bring this issue to.
We'd love to hear any thoughts, you know.
What a weak question, so that I'm not.
No, this is the public forum.
Yeah. And I forgot about Charlie.
One few minutes.
Yeah, Farah Turner.
Good to go, sir. Thank you so much for coming in, I'm an ex-Hagley College student myself, I've had a couple here too actually. And I'm also a child of, of, uh, Gatiawa and Tadunak. My final problem is, so thank you so much for coming today. Um, the question I've got is, I'm glad you're not in Wellington because that will be a massive first read of fright. But in the Christchurch context, are there any other, um, streets? Um, you see, they may have that sort of historical context.
Absolutely. Uh, one we researched was Wakefield, which is in summer.
Yes.
Um, and he, uh, kidnapped or abducted a sixteen-year-old girl and was imprisoned for it. And.
Yes, and while he was in prison, he was basically, um, because he was basically a common Indian. Um, reaching to colonised parts of New Zealand basically while he was in jail and then he came to New Zealand and, yeah. He's just an awful guy and I, I'm pretty sure Wakefield and Sumner isn't the only place named after him, like the.
Nelson. That's right. Nelson.
A town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, not only is he like a colonist, he's also like just an awful person. So, um, that's definitely like, obviously not just Christchurch, but so as we looked into it, it's awful, like pretty much, not all of them, but so many street names and avenue names are named after awful people and people just don't know. I mean, we didn't know about the connection between Rollaston, the invasion of Parihaka and the Native Schools Act until we looked into it further, but yeah.
Yeah, and that's the question I've got next was around understanding colonial history. Uh, we see statues, streets, roads named after quite significant people in the colonial movement, particularly in the, in the, in the eighteen hundreds. Um, in, in order for us to be able to understand history, um, you found out the street names and then you acted upon it. How else would you educate or understand? How else, how else would you be educated if those street names weren't?
Um.
It's really, it's really happened.
But I wouldn't like.
So, for example, I learnt about my history, uh, through street names and statues. I Googled who that was and then I found podcasts and I figured out what kind of person they were. If those street names weren't there, Mrs Graham Payne did was advocate.
Maybe.
How would we understand what happened in the past? Are there any other avenues that you could think of?
Um, I think there are definitely other ways of, other ways of doing it. Um, history classes in school maybe, I mean, I get what you're saying though, definitely, but, um. Yeah, I think our big thing is it's just, we would hate for it to be like, seem like we're celebrating that, like by name. Like that just feels so wrong to have given these people this honour of having street names that we pronounce all the time.
That's a great answer. When I was hoping for.
Yeah, and one, one, because Taran, have you said that, Taran?
I'll do it real quick, thank you.
You're cool.
So you mentioned, and thanks for coming in, that's an important sort of conversation. Um, you mentioned Rollaston, I mean, that's outside of our, kind of our city boundaries, would you make a similar presentation to the, to the Selwyn District Council? I'd so encourage you to do that.
Yeah, we absolutely would. Yeah, I think we came to you guys first just because, yes, you have more influence and also because it is such a widespread issue and because like Josh said, this is the, quite a horrific example. But it is definitely something that's happening all over Christchurch. So, but yeah, definitely, we would make the same presentation.
Yeah, the best to tell the future.
Yeah, I'm sorry, if you can tell the past, tell the future.
Thank you very much guys for, uh, coming and making the effort, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. Yeah.
Thank you, honess.
Okay, so now we have, um, deputations by management. We have, um, the, on behalf of the former refugee steering committee who will speak regarding item twelve and introduce the committee and its priorities. Please. See you.
See you.
It's all yours, mate. Have you like?
Okay. Kiora Ko'otara, salam aleikum, good morning everyone, thank you so much for the opportunity for us to speak today. Um, so, kohumaiha, hakimi toko, anyone know Afghanistan Ahoa? I am the chairperson of the church, uh, refugee steering committee here in Christchurch. Um, our steering committee is newly established, um, community lead group made up ten representative. I do have some of them over here as well with me. Um, so they, we are all nominated by all for Christchurch, former, sorry, former, uh, former former refugee Christchurch, of course, uh, his ten representatives and, uh, which includes Somali, Eritian, Ethiopian, um, Afghani and Iranian Nepalese and Britney's communities. Taking, um, our purpose is to make sure that, uh, the people live experience of displacement and resettlement. Um, they are actively involved in shaping decisions, advisory and services and policies that affect their lives here in Christchurch. So a bit of background of how the committee, um, existed. So this committee was created as a direct outcome of MBI funded projects to strengthen meaningful refugee facilitation. For a long time, our communities have spoken about the trust, needed trust, collective voice to build stronger connections both within our communities, with council, service providers and government agencies. While there are already many services and organisation doing the good work, there was still services more, sorry. There was still a clear gap in having our community members truly put aside and advise on how services can be more representative and effective. The steering committee helps build this gap, but it brings together diverse groups with different skills and representatives at both united by the same goal. Um, to foster trust, shared knowledge and make sure that, uh, make sure that our community can precipitate and local decision-making in a meaningful way. Not just as a recipient at the service, but as active contributor and partners. I'll hand over to the deputy chair.
Thank you, Kiora Ko'otara, um, aptoa, akko selleman, uh, toko inkua. Dr. Sullivan Sarwari, uh, thank you, Homair, I just want to build on what she said and I'm actually very, um, happy to see the word participation and I would like to build on that, um, given the opportunity we have. So this committee, uh, is primarily about the voice of refugees in the city and see how we can bring that voice to the decision-making process, uh, primarily speaking. Um, we are very happy to, um, as, as Homair said, we have a strategic plan in place, uh, by now. It's very new this committee, um, at least in the current composition, we have only been here for roughly two months. We've got a strategic plan in place, we've got a long-term plan, but also a short-term plan. Uh, in terms of the, the, the short-term plan, we are here to raise awareness about the committee. So we're very happy that you know that the committee is in existence. Uh, but also that the committee is here to advocate for, uh, rights, uh, uh, of refugees in the city. Whether those are in relation to jobs, uh, employment, uh, broader speaking, um, health-related issues, education needs. Uh, because when you come to a new place, it's very difficult to integrate. And I'm sure the councillors here and the mayor, uh, your, your, your priority is to meaningfully integrate these, uh, refugees into, into the city so that they can meaningfully contribute, uh, to the, uh, economy of the city and the country. Uh, in terms of the broader goal, uh, for us is to see how the committee can facilitate a discussion between the different networks that Homair talked about and, uh, the council making decisions. Particularly, we are interested to see how we can bring that voice in long-term plans. Of course, that is not for now, but in, in the long term, we're really interested to see how refugees can be meaningfully involved when the LTP is, is developed. Uh, we would like to see the meaningfulness of that participation and see how we can go, um, frankly speaking, beyond the public notice and comment approach. It's a big document, it's difficult for refugees to understand that, how we can unpack it, make it more interactive, make it more conversational. And we're here to see if we could play that role to, uh, to, to sort of link communities with, uh, the decision-making process. So we are here to invite that collaboration, the spirit of partnership, we would like to be seen as a meaningful partner so that we can bring that voice of refugees, uh, to the decision-making table. Ultimately, our goal is, uh, to see refugees are meaningfully integrated. Uh, they continue to face a number of challenges, uh, despite making good progress. Uh, and hopefully this committee will be able to support the council, um, on the decisions that ultimately impact the city, but the refugees, thank you.
You have one question maybe. So let's.
And do you have any suggestions for? We do have group come in and they talk about it and I agree that there's a long way to go. Um, so that we can start planning. Yeah, you can take all any members as one answer.
You want to stick that? Thank you, um, so I invite, uh, input from my old colleagues, uh, but in terms of the meaningfulness of engagement, I think it's important to understand the context here, uh, as you would do. Um, that a lot of us, uh, in, in the community may not be, uh, so we would, we may have English language problems. We may have some communication challenges and then cultural challenges on top of that. Um, we believe that, uh, we could, we could tailor some engagement uh, mechanisms for refugees. Um, so for example, if you're making a decision on an annual plan, it is important to break that down uh, and see if we could have a work group, a working group. And we have, for example, um, a face-to-face interaction instead of just having a link and say, hey, you can make a submission here. Because often that is, uh, the disincentive for refugees, they don't know how to do that. They, they need to be socialized on that and maybe we can, uh, on the behalf of the communities, we can make a collective submission. I'm also of the view that we can have a conversational type dialogue where, you know, re- representatives from the, from the communities can come, uh, and, and, and talk to you, uh, more, more often. So beyond this opportunity that we have here, I think that would be highly appreciated. But again, yeah, our team members are here, uh, please feel free to, um, add.
Right. We've, we've run out of time, but thank you so much for the effort you, um, wanted to come and talk to us, very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate for hearing us, to you.
Okay, so we will now move on to our deputations, right in five, more of air pedestrian improvements. And the Chair of Spraiton Keshmeh, Heathcote, Tom Board will kick things off on Zoom.
Fantastic, can you hear me?
Yep.
Excellent. Okay, so I'm going to keep this brief, um, I just sort of want to talk through, uh, the rationale behind our submission. Um, a lot of it is, uh, said already in writing and I don't, I don't want to repeat that. Um, but, uh, yeah, so essentially, um, our board is supporting the, um, pedestrian improvements as proposed, uh, by staff. Um, I think that the context for this, these changes is obviously the Tikaha Stadium coming online, which will, uh, you know, mean that large groups of pedestrians are crossing those, those two areas. But I think it's also worth noting that there is a lot of other activity already in those areas, which lends itself to uh, pedestrian activity and we believe that changes that are made to improve pedestrian access are likely to have huge benefits, uh, even beyond the sort of event, uh, schedules. Um, so, yeah, for example, you've got the Otter Campus, uh, which sits, uh, on the north side of, of Morehouse Ave, which is a a very much a pedestrian, uh, walkable campus, um, that's separated from, uh, the shops across the road, the, the supermarket and the, you know, the eating areas by, um, by Madras Street. by Madras Street. Uh there's also uh the Cathedral College and Future Catholic Cathedral, which uh will be um, you know, there's there's a lot of foot traffic, obviously, foot traffic obviously around schools um and bicycle traffic uh and and churches. There's the Washington Way Skate Park, which is a massive uh it's a it's a mecca really for uh some of the one of our most uh favourite forms of actual transport, skateboarding. Um so I guess what what I'm trying to do there is just paint a bit of a picture that that actually Morehouse Ave, as it currently is, really stands as a as a massive moat uh blocking uh active travel, walking and cycling and skateboarding uh between a bunch of areas on either side of it. And it's the same we said from Madras um in Barbados. Uh so, yeah, while we recognise that this that the the initiative for this has come from the stadium, well, you know, the the need for it has come from the stadium coming online. Uh yeah, we we think that it's got it's got potential to have huge benefits for the community. Um and it and it and it's likely that it will be a significant demand inducer as well. So we could see that when uh when we add extra uh facility for pedestrian uh access across those roads, that the demand is really uh strong. Um so what we would encourage is actually if anything further that could be done to take this op- take this opportunity for um for further traffic calming measures, if possible. Uh we've left it pretty pretty open in our submission as to what that could look like. Uh but, you know, as we, as board members, we're not um not traffic professionals as much as we'd like to think we are. Um but, yeah, that that's essentially the substance of our submission, right, is that we would like to see uh we'd like to see this and more. Yeah, thanks.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Callum. That that's great. Thank you for your time. No questions as a minute up his sleeve. No, we're all good. Thanks, bud.
Cheers, thanks.
Thank you. Now we have David Palmer on uh behalf of Greater Otatahi is here. Thank you, mate.
Good, everyone. Do that. Um. Cool. In the interest of time, I'm not going to go over a whole submission today. It's obviously a very long one. Um so just as basically our organisation's really supportive of these changes, generally speaking. Um several of our members use this intersection day pretty much daily as car drivers, as cyclists and as pedestrians. And they all express like quite a lot of excitement that it's come for you guys to improve. Um so today I'm going to mostly focus my comments on the slip lane at the northwest corner of um Madras and Morehouse intersection. Um we've noticed that there's this alternative option that's been put forward to retain the slip lane. We've had a close look at that proposal, the design that's been put forward. Um and our recommendation is still very strongly to remove that slip lane. Um there are several problems with slip lanes generally, uh but there are actually specific issues with the design of this slip lane that we think really urgently need to be addressed. Um the major problem is visibility. So we didn't even have to do a site visit. If you just look on Google Street View, um you can see the issue of visibility on the left-hand side there. As cars are approaching the slip lane, there's actually a person waiting there. Um and you just can't see them because there's a a traffic sign, there's a power pole, there's a bunch of vegetation in the way. And so that creates a huge safety risk from the perspective of pedestrians. Um like all slip lanes, and I actually observed this on my way to work this morning, going past a slip lane on Peppinoi Road. Um people, as they're pulling up to the slip lane, they're actually looking right to look for a gap in the traffic. They're not looking left where there are pedestrians standing. So that creates a huge safety risk for pedestrians. They're just not really visible in this in this design. Um and when you've finally also got um high speeds turning through this intersection, because that's obviously like sort of quite a rounded corner. People are going through there reasonably quickly. You've got that kind of deadly combination of high speeds, low visibility, pedestrians in the same spot. It's just not a good idea. Um we also like that the original proposal actually creates a lot of space for pedestrians. There isn't actually much space on this footpath. It's a really narrow footpath. It's only about one point five metres wide at its narrowest point. Uh and the vegetation sort of grows out over that. You can see this in the images that we've got people waiting here. One person's got a walking stick, one person's on bicycle, there's a lime scooter parked across the footpath there. Um and that's actually quite a narrow space. There's not really space for people to both wait and walk around. And similarly, the island itself, you can see in that street view image, there's four people waiting there, two of them on a bicycle. Um there's just not a lot of space actually out on the pedestrian island. Um you could keep a slip lane and address that issue, but at that point, you're looking at doing urban channel to narrow the slip lane and create space for pedestrians. As soon as you're doing urban channel, cost is enormous. You may as well just remove the slip lane because you're doing that already anyway. Um and finally, we've had a look at similar slip lanes across the city um and had an observation of driver behaviour. Um one of the negative effects of these slip lanes is people tend to nudge out and to try and kind of make a gap, particularly when the road they're moving on to is congested, which can happen on Madras. Uh and this means that they end up blocking cycle lanes. People end up parked over the zebra crossing. And there's also an issue that we've observed where, because of this, people basically back up into the intersection. By the time they kind of make the decision to commit across the intersection, by the time they're over there, someone's already turned in in front of them and the space has sort of disappeared. And so people end up backing up into the intersection. So our conclusion was basically that in most of these cases, um the slip lane is actually making traffic flow much worse. Fundamentally, it's an uncontrolled turn being added to a controlled intersection. And so you lose all the benefits of signalisation with pulsing of traffic and having a smooth flow of traffic. Um yeah, I mean, overall, we think slip lanes are a sort of slightly strange design in the sense that they uh kind of trying to serve two opposing purposes. They're allowing for high-speed, uncontrolled turns uh through the intersection, but they're also meant to be placed with pedestrians crossing the road. Um those are two sort of opposing purposes. So we think in the interest of traffic flow and in the interest of pedestrian safety, it would be best to remove the slip lane as the original proposal. If you take any questions, I've got one minute.
Um thank you. With the option B, it's changing the whole intersection really because on the east side of the intersection, you've got Ara, uh the fast food, et cetera. And now you're going to have a crossing. So one would imagine that the majority of students, et cetera, leaving Ara and heading south wouldn't bother crossing the one-way anywhere between um Sinesa Street and Morehouse Ave because there is no crossing there at all. You'd have to just.
Yes, there's there's a new supply as well.
Is it?
Okay, so I'm I'm not sure what the question is, right?
But my question is, the numbers of people now on that using that crossing at the slip lane, which will be raised if it go where the B was, what options go raised and the island there was enlarged. But perhaps the majority of the people now will be on the east side using the crossing that kind of goes towards the southeast of the area.
One thousand existence.
Yes.
At this moment, yeah, I mean, that's probably a fair assessment. Um however, I think, you know, if you're putting in a sort of overall dangerous design uh in any way, it's kind of not a really good enough excuse to say, well, we're putting people somewhere else anyway. And you may as well just make sure that all the crossings are safe rather than unsafe and the others are.
With 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 your comment with regards to like Morehouse Ave, it's like a moat, which I think is absolutely right.
Callum, actually.
Sorry, Callum, sorry. Um the interest of the next one up is has the same problem in the sense, Pick and Save, which is the, you would imagine is a huge generator for footfall. There's no crossing on the west side of the intersection. So we've kind of got the same issue, just a bit further on the road. And perhaps the 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 stadium has been um a catalyst or an excuse to actually do this, these intersections, and they should actually do this one as well. We should do this one as well.
Yeah, I think you should do this one. It was in our submission that we would like to see. Maybe make other improvements as you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good on you. Powerful view to all our times. Yeah, is it an extremely quick, I know it'd be a quick question, I'd be.
Oh, just a just a clarification. Would you like us to remove all the slip lanes from this?
Yeah, we're requesting the submission. Um obviously, that's probably not realistic within the budget that is presented. Um however, we think it would be better for traffic safety and for traffic flow to remove this.
Did you have a comment on the Barbados Street? Um I think, um the one that's got no improvement, but probably got the most amount of people that would use it.
Yeah, we had comments, I think, related around, so you're talking about the one on the sort of the western side of the intersection.
The skate park to Ara.
We had comments around possibly introducing um some way for cyclists to more easily access that because at the moment, it's kind of a weird, it's a weird bit of road design at the moment where there's like a cycle slip lane. Um it's quite strange and we'd actually quite like to see some improvements there to make it easier for people to get across that um in order to get into Ara.
Oh, beauty. Thank you very much. Okay, um George, are you on Zoom there?
Uh yes, I'm here.
Far away.
Uh cool. Uh um so I just found a few of my comments um about uh first of all, I just go to the Morehouse-Barbados-Waltham intersection. Um so uh one of my comments was just, please add a cycle waiting box on the far-left lane of the Barbados Street. Uh because currently, there's no um there's currently no way for cyclists to trigger traffic lights when you're crossing that um Morehouse Ave, especially late at night. That's an issue when there's there's no, there's little traffic. So you have to wait in an order amount of time for to be able to cross. Um and also on the other side of the intersection, when you're coming down Waltham Road, um uh the speaker before me just mentioned um that it is a really weird uh crossing. And it it would be better if something was done there to improve cycle access to Ara and then down um uh down Barbados Street, because it does connect also to the cycleway that goes down Feroe, which is is a really good way to connect for me. Uh I use it quite regularly. Um moving on to the Morehouse-Madras-Gassen intersection. Um so currently, travelling along uh on a bike from Ara Campus or west along uh west to east along Morehouse Ave, um then it's actually very difficult to get onto Gassen Street. So it's it's great that there's now a um pedestrian crossing. Um but my recommendation would actually be to make it like a combined cycle and pedestrian crossing because you're going to have a shared pathway down um uh Gassen Street um from Ara. So if if you wanted to bike down onto Gassen Street um to crossing Morehouse Ave, it's it's actually quite difficult. So having a way for cyclists to legally do that would be actually a really good way to improve the design. Um and additional points, I I would actually prefer the removal of of the slip lanes. As um I see there was some recommendation to put them back in in the plan. Um I'm very against having slip lanes. Um uh slip lanes are incredibly dangerous and encourage dangerous driving uh because of the shallow corner allows for higher speeds while maintaining control of your vehicle. So we all know faster speeds mean less time to react and a more likely that a pedestrian will be seriously injured or killed. So in my opinion, slip lanes have no place in the middle of a city and we should be removing them whenever we get the chance to. Um I probably have quite a bit of time for questions, if there is any. Um but uh, yeah, I've all very in support of these plans.
Thank you. Thank you. Um George, Tyler's got a question.
Hey, George, uh you just talked about the shared cycle and pedestrian crossing. Do you know any parts in the city where it's been done successfully?
Uh I probably could think of one. Um if I had to think about it, uh.
I can ask staff too, to see if it's if it's possible or if it's easier.
Yes, um but um I, yeah, talk talking about that Gassen, Gassen Street, the um Barbados-Waltham speed, that that would be on both of actually, it'll be good. I I sorry, can't think of one off the top of my head.
No, no worries. Thanks, mate.
It's each week Columbo.
Each week.
Any more questions? No, we're all good. Thank you very much for your time, George.
Thank you.
Yes. Now, Mel is either here or Zoom. So, um Anne.
Gara kotoa and Scott Toko England, I'm here to speak on behalf of spokes. Um next slide, please. So um pedestrians and cyclists are looking for safer ways to cross Morehouse Ave, Morehouse Road. It's Morehouse Ave, actually. Um and was and they also want space with good visibility to wait and not to block others. Uh you've seen this photo in um in the present presentation from Raja Otatahi, but actually, that cyclist coming out of Woolworths is blocking the whole path and there's nowhere else that she can go. She and that this is just the sheer lack of space that's in that little corner. So we are strongly urging you to remove that slip lane, to give people enough space to actually share that area. And you were talking about people coming out of Ara, but actually, there's a lot of traffic going to Woolworths as well. Um and and particularly um the children that are coming across from um that are coming across here are also staying on that particular side of the road. Um we also want light sequences on both intersections that uh provide time for cyclists and pedestrians to get across easily. Um and these changes will make the um intersections much safer. Next, please. So in terms of Gassen Street and Morehouse Ave, um we strongly, again, we strongly support the additional space on the Woolworths corner. Removing the slip lane makes it safer for cyclists going straight ahead from Gassen Street as well, which hasn't been mentioned. Uh because there there's not cars coming on the inside of them when they get to that particular point at the Woolworths corner. Um we support the build-outs on the on the northeast corner as well to give more space um and the new crossing on the east side. Um the stagger crossing doesn't have a lot of um space, but it's certainly a lot better than what we've got there now. Um the platforms on the other side, um ideally, they would go, but we uh accept that they won't. Um and that uh we need to have those um platforms there because drivers, when you have a platform, look straight ahead. And when they're looking straight ahead, they're more likely to see a cyclist or pedestrian. When there's no um platform, what happens is they're looking right to to get into the traffic as fast as they can. And that's when they miss seeing people.
Sorry, Anne, can you just talk about where the platform?
See, the platform's down the bottom on the slip lanes.
You're talking about the slip lanes.
Yeah, yeah, the two, the two south slip lanes.
Yep.
Those ones. Um next, please. Um Barbados Street Morehouse is also a popular route for cyclists to get to Ara, Ethic Cathedral College in Washington Way. Uh we know that cyclists going to Ara in the college often use the footpath once they get across the intersection. Um there's actually no signage to the Ara entrance on Morehouse Ave, which would actually be a really cheap way of of um stopping some of that. Um and the the paths are not shared paths. Um the new crossing on the on the um on the other side, we fully support that. Um we support the tra- the platform for slowing traffic um for the same reason that we supported on the other intersection. Um this intersection needs more cycle treatment. There isn't even any green paint um added to this intersection in this plan. And the old paint, the old, yeah, uh red paint, hasn't been replaced. And yet it's as faded as anything. You can barely see it in that diagram. Um so I strongly urge you to put in some more paint, um some more hot turns to actually get you um around. Um and next slide, please. Um this is the love to ride data, um which happened in February this year. Um and you can see that you are picking the right intersections, um the uh and the approaches to the intersections are also considered dangerous by cyclists. Um that's both on Madras Street and on Gassen Street. So um again, the slip lane at the corner is the most important. The one on the Woolworths corner is the most important change. Thank you very much.
Forty seconds. Anyone like to say anything? No, Tim, yeah.
Just with the um slip lanes, with the putting rises on the platforms, is it? That will change drive behaviour. I mean, and I I'd use the example of the Kashmir Columbo uh Dais Pass Roundabout, which has now got good rises there, which is a lot safer for pedestrians and cyclists to what it was before. So just putting rises, which changes the driver's behaviour. What are your comments with regards to that?
Yes, it does. But on that particular corner, the Woolworths corner, there isn't enough space. There just isn't enough space, literally. So you need to have the space first and then you can put the slip lane in. Or the or the, you know, the riser on the slip lane.
Thank you very much. Good to see you again. Um is Mel here or on? And Danny is, yep, and you've got a video clip as well.
Yeah, more than a couple of cars, oh, called Danny and talk to England. Uh thanks for giving me the time to speak today. So generally speaking, I'm in support of option A changes proposed here. Um I do think it's a missed opportunity at Morehouse Barbados end, but get it that bit later. Um but particularly an agreement for creating extra place to cross opposed to having to cross the road three times. Um which also the benefits of of that, uh it's more than commented for anything. So uh agreeing with the idea of removing the slip lane as well, because it gives more space, especially those uh trying to better their life by attending Arda Institute. Uh at the Madras option, um one more green paint is nice for people on bikes. It doesn't offer any real protection. Um I do have a clip to play to show what biking through here is like from when I was living in St. Anthony for three, four years. And this was my cycle in. So this is heading north into the city. Three, four years and this was my cycle in. So this is heading north into the city. Uh, GoPro fixed on the front, so going past Countdown slash Woolworths. Yeah, I, that wasn't a nice enjoyable moment. Um, I put myself in the, if there's four groups of cyclists. No way, no how. And then the strong and fearless, infused and confident. I'm somewhere between infused and confident and sometimes strong and fearless. Except the only time I wouldn't call myself fearless is would be going down Gassen and Madras Street. The entire section from back down, um, Uxley Street North, um, is a nightmare. Paint that's about three feet wide maybe. Um, you've got cars coming out constantly. Of driveways and intersections that push you into traffic if, so then you're an unprotected cyclist in traffic and it's incredibly narrow and frightening. Um, and as you can see, that, that was a little bit close, um, with those, with a truck there. So. I am curious to know, uh, why it's no fiction included in intersection. And back to the Morehouse Barbados ends, I feel that's a bit of a missed opportunity. Um, totally in favour of the extra crossing, to again to have a fun start, I think they call it, uh, one, two, three, four. Um, but going down there from, going from this all the city south. Um, there's a lot of stuff, like you could fly a plane down that road. Um, you might hit the park cards, but there's a lot of space there. I think there's a real opportunity to create more choices for people. Um, in terms of walking or, or bus routes or drivers or, or people on bike. So there's a lot of choices that are possible there and. It's a little disappointing to see that wasn't included. So but overall, uh, generally supportive, um, of, of what's been proposed. So if you've got any questions here.
Much, Yanni.
Thank you. Um. The width of the cycle lines that we're proposing, all the, you know, the green paint, uh, it looks like it's really narrow. Is basically, um, do you know what size it is or?
Um, I think I put a submission to Snaps in salt once. I think it's using my feet, which are feet, I don't know, one foot. Um, I think it's about eighty centimetres, seventy five even, and. Um, I think NZTA guidelines of one point four to one point six, like somewhere in that bracket.
I don't know what I was thinking when I was looking at it. Like, it just doesn't seem like it would make a safe standard for cycling.
Uh, cause you've got the gutter there as well. Half of it's gutter.
Yeah.
And I, I, you know, I don't, I might be confident, but I don't bet my skills to be riding in a gutter. That's then what leaves in order and other detritus. Yeah, give me a chance for it to go away.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Right, that's the, that is brilliant. Mel, sign of Mel. Right, um, presentation of petitions, we have none. So we'll move on to our staff reports, which the first one is. Number five, Morehouse Avenue pedestrian improvements. So.
Um, yeah, so I'm happy to move, um, option A for the, uh. Barbados Street and option B for Madras Street with one amendment. And that is not putting in the speed humps and then assessing after six months or a year to whether they are needed. Once the changes have been made.
Well, I'll take that.
Hello, um, staff recommendation.
Oh, seconds. Which is A and I almost.
I like B for the, for your betting, but removing the, um. Speed hamper, if you like.
Yeah, okay. Oh, yeah.
Well, I can't, cause I can't support, I like B, but I can't support it if you're gonna take the speed amp set up for this.
So, so it is a secret thing.
Um, so we're here today and the report in front of you is to seek approval for the Morehouse Ave pedestrian improvement project. Um, we had the information session yesterday where we presented, um, some more of the background and the feedback. They will take the report as read, um, and we can take any further questions from you.
Okay. Right, so Pauline first.
Oh, thank you. I'm just, um, residing from the deputations. Um, what's your comment on changing the sequence of the lights to allow cyclists more time to get through? Is it possible to lock it? Could we include that as a noting item in the solution?
I hand over to Loplin for the traffic.
Just asking staff to have a look.
It's a possibility and it's operational, so.
Yes, but it's probably what you would normally perhaps do unless you had direct feedback. So.
Depends on the circumstances, you know. Generally, that's the sort of thing we might do around schools, et cetera, at school time. For similar regard for pedestrian crossing.
And so also as part of all this work on both intersections, will there be new paint topped up on those and green margins as beneficial?
So there will be at Morehouse Madras Gassen, um, the recent project to upgrade the green colour surfacing along Waltham Road on the approach. Morehouse Avenue that's recently spun in. Um, and then we can look at additional coloured surfacing at that intersection, but we're not. As part of this proposal, necessarily upgrading the cycle infrastructure at that intersection. So the feedback that was received. Through, um, consultation period around cycle access at Waltham, um, Barbados Morehouse has been passed to our cycle network planner. Um, to look at the area more holistically.
Right, and just on that, um, Barbados one, why is there not more treatment on the western side of that intersection? Cause that surely would be the, the desire line when people are coming from the stadium out of town on foot. And be on that side of the road. Or do you feel that that's okay the way it is?
I guess, um, we're just trying to improve. There in terms of providing that new crossing point and making the slip lane safer. Um, this is being funded from the Minor Road Safety Programme, so we are looking at improvements as to what's really needed. If there's an issue with the existing crossing, which I'm, I wasn't necessarily aware of, um, we can look at that as well. Whether it's timing or through road banking.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you, Gemma. I'd like to ask a question about the Madras Gassen or how in section. We just heard from Danny about the cycling infrastructure in his video. Does your action in any way change or improve choose that he's raised? Because when I look, it still looks as if the cycling, who was still there.
So, um, the northbound cycle lane on Gassen Street at the approach to Morehouse Avenue gets slightly widened. And there's more space between the curb line, um, on the northern side and the traffic lane. So we have tried to increase the space for people riding. Um, but as Anne from Spokes commented, removing the slip lane. Means that you're removing one conflict point as well, because you've removed the, um, kind of unrestricted turn. Um, and as, uh, the first deputation from Great Auto Tahi, people are just looking to the right and going when they can. Um, and so controlling that with a light means that as a person on a bike, you've got one less issue to worry about. Cause if you, um, I guess if they're sitting kind of slightly in the cycle lane to make that turn as a driver. Then you're pushing the person on a bike even further out into the main traffic lane. So the proposal does make improvements. It's not going to provide a separated cycle way by any means, but it does provide more space and it removes a conflict, an unrestricted conflict.
And if, uh, a less confident cyclist, cyclist chose not to use that intersection. Because of the, the safety hazards that still exist notwithstanding, was to remove the slip lane. Where is the nearest, uh, separated or safe next level of service for cycle infrastructure in relation to this particular crossing?
Um, that is quite a tricky one, because if you're coming from the south, you've either got Antigua Street, which is quite a long way away. Or you end up having to go around to get onto Ferry Road. It's your next protected cycle lane. So that is kind of like a, um, a gap, a big gap in terms of protected cycle infrastructure from the south.
And for the less confident cyclists, there's still nothing stopping them from getting off their bikes, walking across the.
Right, so when, um, we did some, uh, observations down onsite for people turning right on their bikes and they weren't comfortable. In either, um, and I think it was George also mentioned it, rather than biking through the intersection. They use this small little island as a kind of hook turn. Um, so they go to the island and then make a turn. And they would still be able to do that if the slip lane was removed because we'd have more space. Um, and I guess it is that space issue again, if more people continue to use the island as a hook turn. Then there's less room for people on foot. Um, so.
Thank you very much.
Um, got another question. So, um, this whole thing came to council because it crosses two community board areas was the reason, wasn't it? So if, um, option B was to pass, but then there were issues there in future, especially with more numbers of people. If that was, corner was to be dealt with, would that go then straight to the, um, Peppino in a central community board to be dealt with?
So the reason it came through was because the, um, in the last delegation's register, if it was in the part A area, then it would automatically come to council. But I think that was changed in March. So actually, yes, it could go to the community board. Unless it involves things like cycle lanes, which then come back to council.
Okay, um, and have you talked at all with Woolworths about purchasing some more of their corner?
No, we haven't.
Because that, if, if option B was to pass, that could be another possibility, um, to get rid of some of those plants there, you know, and, and make more space.
That could be an option to discuss.
So I would support that if we needed to. Um, and, yeah, but that's all.
Thank you. Um, I, I, I can see in the report the number of movements eating from Morehouse turning left onto Madras. I can see the numbers for morning and evening. Is there a daily figure handy somewhere?
Haven't really predicted, Kaylee. I think that we were just looking at kind of the peak of the peaks.
Yeah, yeah.
Impact would be in removing that left turn.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
It did seem to be less than those turning past the street, which doesn't have a slip lane.
Sure.
It was important.
Yeah, it's got six hundred movements. Um, now I'm, I'm on Google Street View, going from Morehouse to turn left onto Waltham Road. And there's a whole lot of vegetation that blocks visibility, right?
Yes.
So I'm looking at that thinking, wouldn't it be more useful to remove vegetation that would achieve surely a lot more than putting a speed amp there?
Um, so we will look to some of that vegetation to sightlines so people can definitely see someone's waiting.
Yeah.
But, um, sometimes when you increase sightlines, people then have a tendency to increase because they can see a little bit more. Um, and I guess we're just looking at that traffic calming where the, the riskiest point is for pedestrians seeing the road. Cause everything else is controlled, but that's uncontrolled. So having the separate crossing to priority. We're encouraging people to walk across the road and we just want to make sure that people's travelling at safety speed.
Yeah. So would, would a resolution need anything around removing vegetation?
I've got staff, uh, looking at it through detailed design, but if you wanted a note information, I think we can make sure.
Thank you.
Okay, Yanni.
Uh, yeah, cool. Um, in terms of the cycle line width on the Morehouse Gassen Street. What's the width that we're doing and what's the minimum standard?
So the ones that are within the scope of this project, we're looking at six, which is your minimum standard width. The one on Gassen Street further south is, I think we've measured it as a metre from curb face to white line, which is less than the precise. Um, but Gassen Street, I guess historically it's been a traffic route and it's been wedged in to some extent. Because that's needed for the traffic lanes.
That's right, that's it. Just to be clear, on them, Morehouse Ave, Madras Street.
Yes.
Side, it's one point six, which is the minimum.
That was one point five to the absolute minimum.
And what's the current width?
I think it's currently sitting around there. So we are trying to increase it slightly through here.
It just looked pretty harrowing to see that photo of the truck going past and, um, is, is there any? Like, what would be best practice for an intersection like this?
Most of our cycle lanes are intersections, I think. Maybe cycle way. Um, we are always just generally constrained by space. If we need more space, we're either going to move a given channel or we can take some more at the traffic lane widths. I think just here, we've got minimum traffic length. We've tried, we've tried to increase the cycle lane. Much as we can. As soon as you start putting lots of minimums together, then that introduces a risk in itself as well.
I was just gonna check back. So I've asked previously, um, because when we got a presentation on the upgrade of Brom Street. Gassen Street was proposed as a cycle way and there was going to be a whole bunch of work done around this corridor. But now I've been told that Brom Street's nothing to do with council and we've got no involvement in it. I, I'm just trying to understand because both of these intersections obviously will have a, um, be impacted by the Brom Street plans. But I don't understand what the, the long-term planning is for this area and how it connects back. Particularly in light of the concern that people have raised today around these being safer cycling routes.
So we'd have to come back to you on, um, the relationship between Brom Street, Montreal, uh, Morehouse and corridors between the two. Day. Um, but the design of this intersection currently is we've tried to align it with best practice. Um, in terms of cycle language, slip lane, slip lane, street crossings.
Right, okay, but, um, we've got a less than ideal minimum of cycle wear.
So if we detail design, we could look to see if there's any more room, we can take out the traffic lane widths to add into the cycle lane. Um, and we'll get that through detailed design safety.
I just want to pick up on the timing because, um, I mean, even for some cars going through that Barbados Waltham, the timing is so quick at some times a day. That you literally struggle to get from one side to the other. It's just a couple of seconds and it changes. I can't imagine what that's like for someone walking or on a bike. We seem to have a real issue with some of the timings around our intersections. Are you aware of that issue or is that something that you can? Can, well, like, how will you review it?
That's a lot then.
But I guess context, like the minimum green time for a vehicle movement is six seconds. So while it might seem like two seconds or similar, it's six seconds, that's the minimum that will run. Um, general, I guess. Base times and intersections vary over the day depending on how much traffic is on each approach and it's controlled by a, a traffic system. Um, traffic signal control systems gets. Um, so if there's, if there's a large period of time where there's not many vehicles in an, in an approach, then it will keep, you know, um. Reducing the amount of time given to the approach to give water other times. So you might be encountering those sort of issues. But other times, it's just that busy trying to, you know, balance conflicting priorities.
What I'm trying to really understand though is, um, if it feels really quick for someone in a car. What does it feel like for someone on a cycle? It must, it must feel like, you know, quite dangerous. So I'm just wondering, is there a minimum time that we assess for cyclists or pedestrians to cross? And how do we, like, how do we do that to understand that we're not making a more dangerous environment?
Yeah, the, excuse me, in addition to what Loplin explained, on termination of the green time. So that when that, if, if it does run a minimum, not many of our intersections will run a minimum. But at the end of that green, there'll be an intergreen time and, and that time is the time to allow people who have just crossed. That limit line to get away from any conflict, though, many of the streams of traffic opening. That's, that's taken up by the amber or the yellow and the all red phase. So what we, we could look at, we could go away and look at this later today quite, quite easily and just double check what that intergreen time is. And, and to check, is it appropriate if a cyclist who may be, may be slower moving than a vehicle. They cross that limit line just as the green signal extinguishes, have they got enough time to clear the conflict zone?
Yeah, Yanni, I've got eight more.
Okay, just the, the bottom one to me was just, um, so Kiwi Rail, you know, on the part where we've done upgrades.
Kiwi Rail got nothing to do with this corner.
But we were told, sorry, in our briefing, we were told if we upgrade Gassen Street for cyclists, we're raising a significant bill. Kiwi Rail. We're improving the cycle. Do you not see the cycle?
No, we're improving the intersection. Rob, go on to the next question. Timothy.
Um, yeah, just with regards to the video itself. On, um, Madras Street, we've got a strip, it seems, a pointless garden between the road and the footpath. Could we not remove that and include that and extend the footpath slightly? Widen the, um, cycle lane, adjust the island to the west. To make it a lot safer for pedestrians, cyclists. to make it a lot safer for pedestrians, cyclists, and also um, retaining the 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 um, raised platform, the crossing, um, so cars will stop. Because we know that drivers, when they're heading, turning left into a one-way system, will not be looking left because they're expecting traffic to the right. I mean, New Zealand drivers on average are pretty bad, let's be honest. Now, I've seen you. You can't park out there. So to protect both pedestrians and cyclists, we we put the rises in to make people basically stop and look to the left and et cetera. So we never, you never looked at that or we never looked at that?
Through the chat. Excuse me again, if we did remove that patch of garden, you're quite right, we could at least width the footpath here and create more space. Difficulty is though, where we really need the space is on the apex of that corner. It's right on the point of the corner almost, so then you're facilitating people crossing south and east. And.
Right, but what I think Tim's saying is that bottleneck, the bottleneck that Danny had on his picture as he got to that, but it just, it went from half reasonably wide to bugger all.
But we could slightly move the island, which people walk from the supermarket across to and sit there, slightly west, which would then, and it would, yes, it would um, slightly narrow that slip lane, but that's not a bad thing because it would also encourage people. As long as it was wide enough for emergency vehicles and trucks, which I'm sure it would be. So you're just moving that island slightly, you've taken that patch of hugely valuable um, scrub um, out and you cut that in half, so you're getting widening the footpaths and you're widening cycle lane, and it wouldn't, wouldn't that achieve more for everybody?
Okay, um, moving the curb line back, that is an additional expense. We do have some additional room on the east side of Madras Street where there's kind of a a de facto cycle lane. Um, the problem where Danny was riding northbound was that the slip lane island sticks out further than the northern curb line. So if we move that back, we're, we're gonna have to move the whole island back so that we're at least maintaining the small island that's here. Because that's, I guess, the island size is the proxy of the problem. So we can't just take some off and not give it back to somewhere else on the island, otherwise it's just shrinking the size of the island. Um, and again, that's where we've got the issue then looks at the space we've got on Morehouse Ave in trying to retain a left turn, a cycle lane and the three traffic lanes. Because we did look to see if we could increase the size of the island. But it becomes very tricky in trying to manage all the traffic lanes as well. So yes, we could take some off the island, so it increases the space, but then we've just got, we've which is transferring the problem to the pedestrian waiting space, if that makes sense.
But i- if you don't detach the size of the island and you purely move across slightly, even two or three hundred mils buys space and improves the safety of the cycle lane, which then would flow in to the space that where we used to have that beautiful little um, garden.
Yeah, well, yeah, and.
To cut that in half, so.
Yeah, so if the recommendation was to uh, the um, if option B was the preferred option, we could still look to see if we could rebuild the island slightly to the left. Um, to give.
Thank you, Tim. Right, we've, we've still got two thoughts here. Sarah, please.
Uh, thank you so much. Um, just, I guess, ahead of the other ones, an an upgrade to Gassen, so that that kind of um, that space where people are worried about Gassen and the approaches to the intersection, uh, when's that due at some point? Say. Yeah, if there are, is there, is there a, you know, it was going to be part of the Brom Street stuff and, you know, an upgrade, is that actually on a list of projects to do at some point?
So through the chair, we'll, we'll come back to you on that.
Not for years though, right?
And and we'll need to go and speak to Whaka Katahi and just to, just to get some feedback from them as well. And we can then feed that back back to you all.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, they weren't planning on doing it, they were hoping we would do it, though, yeah. Um, and anything on the um, upgrade? Um, the, the red paint that many have mentioned and I've hit in my list as well. Um, do you need a resolution to upgrade the, the red paint on the um, the Barbados Waltham one?
No. No, we don't. Um, Barbados one has been changed to green on the approach to Morehouse.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I know we did Waltham, which, right, but actually the all of those, but you know, the we, the we bike slip lane, all of that kind of stuff. Maintenance of that, so we just go on the action list now and all of those bits.
As they deteriorate and maintenance coming through works, they will replace what was red with green.
But it needs to be done, like, we don't know when maintenance would be done. Okay, all right, that's right. Just um, talk to um, for that particular intersection, will we need a resolution to put two hook turns in? Because there's two pits there where people would turn. So can we get some wording for adding hook turns into that particular intersection? Um, so to be on the Morehouse Ave, if you were coming from Barbados and you want to go along Morehouse, and then on Morehouse, if you're wanting to turn down into Waltham.
Well, and install, we start and store pop tunes for you frankly.
Is that enough?
I'm sorry, right.
Yeah, that'd be sufficient.
Yeah, yeah, okay, um. Yeah, yeah, uh. Um, do the, there's some concern from um, people, you know, who don't want to bike across here, that the um, the staggered crossing might make it too difficult for large bikes, for cargo bikes. Because cargo bikes are really popular in the city at the moment, that the kids being taken to and from schools, um, preschools, those kind of things. Um, is it possible, that looks really awkward with, with those crossings there? Are we able to um, change the, the layout a little bit to make it easier for cargo bikes?
There we are, I guess constrained a little bit by the space in the island. The, um, the one at Barbados is, is as big as we can achieve. Um, like, I think from a cyclist's perspective, if we can make it safer on the road rather than having to do the dog race. It's staggered, that would be preferable. Um, but really, the, I guess the objective of that one was just to improve the pedestrian crossing. And I think cycle access around the connection to Ferry Road does need to be looked at more of a helicopter view because we do need to start improving the cycle connection from the southeast in particular through. Um, and even trying to get into Arda from this point is quite difficult because the shared footpaths are just footpaths, they're not shared paths. Um, so I think in hoping that our cycle network planning team can look at that and maybe look at some projects. Yes, it is difficult to provide for everyone through that staggered thing.
Um, I was thinking that eh, without even changing the space for, for a cargo bike or something like that that's turning, it's the above ground stuff rather than the actual ground stuff. So if you could just make the fence bit slightly shorter for that staggered crossing, if you see what I mean, then you've got a bit more space for, so you, less of a might be easier if that was ever going to be done. Um. Um, Aaron, are you okay with including a resolution to get the hook tunes up without having to move it up?
The white version?
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, so we can add, you know, add in.
You mean just the paint box?
Yeah, yeah, the little green paint box that's the go on the road to, for indicating where people can make safe turns. Um, yeah, but, yeah, but stuff, yeah, and then hook, hook turns were appropriate on these intersections. Thanks.
Sure.
Yeah.
Right, thank you.
I was wondering whether there's any possibility or any thought down the track or even as this goes on. So just pick up on some of the cycle lengths, uh, the other, some of the other.
It could be looked at if there's sufficient room, but if we're not going to make the cycle, then it maybe something a little bit more um, robust than just standalone hit sticks because otherwise we have ongoing maintenance issues with some of the ones that we put in. Um, but that's probably just as a fast. Let's get them on.
Cyclists, they like the idea of.
Um, I've just got two quick questions. The first one is uh, around the proposed seventy-five mil speed humps on the approaches. At what speed are cars expected to drive?
Um, so we recommend that people traverse them around twenty-five. Existence speed is thirty, so I mean, anyone that gets hit over kilometers an hour does have that volatile survival. Um, I think it all depends on what vehicle you're driving, um, as to whether, how much you actually feel. But um, the road markings, the signage, all kind of, yeah, inferred drivers, you need to know that. At a point, you go over it, but twenty-five is what we usually sign.
And in terms of the councillor Kiwan's recommendation, uh, was there a safety? Was, I don't know if you could, was it done? And you've got a point system, correct? So there are different options which have different points. If we did take any speed bumps, do you know in terms of the safety rating?
It would um, reduce the safety rating because that just, any primary safe system treatment as a kind of you need to slow down and stop, force you to stop type thing, it would, people, especially at Morehouse into Waltham, you don't even need to really slow down currently, like that. They are big, wide, sweeping corners. Um, and from a budget perspective, it's easier to add the speed hump than it is to start changing the whole geometry of the corners with curb and channel and drainage and things. So we've looked at the lowest cost option to get the maximum benefit really.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Right, we're getting through it now, we're at six. Um, Erin, please.
I answered mine with a Google. It was uh, can you on the slip lanes? But if you have concerns, have a stop sign on slip lanes and majority of New Zealanders give way, but is there any stop signs? Anybody?
Slip lanes are giveaway.
Yeah, but could we, if we thought like the one outside, we thought, oh, this should, they should all stop here. All the same as the supermarket one.
I guess it comes down to the visibility. Um, yes, we can, you know, put in a stop control, but if people have in excess of the visibility that's needed generally for a stop control, are they actually going to stop or will they continue to operate on a giveaway basis? Um, and so I think the, in these locations, the visibility vehicles is generally pretty good. So um, in terms of the warrant for a stop, it wouldn't necessarily. But no, for vehicles, so not dangerous, but um, for vehicles, if they can have visibility, good visibility in excess of what we normally say that it's kind of a limiting factor for a stop control, um, then we would go with that.
Thank, uh, Pauline, please, and Kelly.
Yeah, thanks. Two point four on page twenty-five. Um, and you're, you're talking about the impact, um, of um, removing the slip plane. So you're expecting initial increases in delays to forty to forty-five seconds. Then you go on to say, however, it's one of the best, I will reach a new equilibrium. Certainly, that is under what it is now. And.
That's a lot, Glenn.
Okay.
Um, I think what really, what we're saying there is that um, over time signal timings are just as well to account for that change in um, and in this case, we've turned, changed to signal control. Um, so we're able to give more time to particular movements to try and balance the delays on the approaches differently.
That comes from to you that that delay will be, will disappear in time.
No, I think it will remain at the value that we've said there. Yeah, you're, you're, you're changing a giveaway control which can go at any point regardless of what phase is running at the intersection to in case we're going to turn left on a particular phase.
Do you think that delay is quite significant?
It's a subjective thing, but it's, it's within the realms of what's typical and that other movements at the intersection experience delays in that, in that realm and.
Yeah, true. Okay, thank you.
Yep, um, yeah, thank you for your work on this. Um, just regarding the Gassen, Morehouse, Madras, um, section. Um, I note that you've got in the report that there's been no crashes involving uh, walking and cycling in the last ten years. Um, this question is, were there any from before that, that you're, oh, you're off?
Well, I just look at that ten year period, things change quite significantly and I guess even just in Christchurch, we have the earthquake and since then, traffic have changed and our streets have changed. So generally, we just look at ten years.
And so after, um, since, I think it's two thousand twenty-two, um, you've got some data and also going back eight years before that, there's been thirty-eight crashes at that intersection. Do you know how many of them have involved us coming out of Morehouse into Madras on that slip lane and hitting cars going through? Do you have that kind of breakdown?
Um, I can, I can get that breakdown for you. I think we just focused really, the main focus was just listening at the, um, the trend at that intersection and it has generally been red light running on the main roads. Um, and since putting in the red light cameras, they probably haven't had the effects that we've wanted and the pressure is red light running, pressure that's elevating um, through the main ones, but I can um, provide, I'll go back and have another look and.
I'm just curious. And and the other thing is, uh, I wasn't aware that there was a red light camera there. Are they quite well signposted and marked?
Um, we have two red light cameras on our network, one at Manchester Street Morehouse and one at Madras Morehouse. Um, there are signs in place, but they're currently being handed over to um, N C T A Waikato. So there's cameras for us and an additional signage will be available this month. Um, so people are aware that there's red light.
Just a final point. I totally agree with uh, councillor Skander on widening that um, that island, yeah, because I've cycled through there and had that same experience that Daniel had in pitch point.
Righto, thank you. Um, Celeste.
I wondered, um, if things have, like, down the track, you sort of add a noting for them. There are an integration there, but it's quite an important connection there, something that would be useful for us, okay.
I don't, I don't think it's necessary. There is um, a gap that maybe does need to be considered by staff between the new signalized crossing outside Arda and Morehouse Avenue because the shared path stops.
But do you hear this, Ryan, that um, us, the planners, to look at holistically at the area and help, and so we've acknowledged this gap.
Okay, so that would already be.
Yes, and we can.
Um, Mel, anything?
Um, yesterday, yesterday, um, I think was Aaron uh, mentioning about St John's or was it? Uh, um, you were going to talk to St John's or some emergency services before today, have you done that?
So, uh, we haven't done that for the emergency services. Councillor Handstock said that we liaised with Ekan regarding the bus. Um, we have some initial feedback. Um, in terms of emergency services, uh, they were all sent for plans as part of the engagement process. We didn't receive anything back with a submission. We've had, I guess, general submissions from them in the past and, and feedback from them. In terms of whether there's a slip lane or not a slip lane and another raised issue, uh, raised issue, rate hump, um, I guess they didn't submit on the other humps that are proposed. They would be comfortable with option B, but we don't have that. We have received any submission from them.
In the, with the cameras, we, do we make the money from those or not?
It's all national, nationalized, yeah.
Which is why we don't put them. Is there a way for us to do that? It'd be so good.
We, um, we continuously, okay, we will, um, additional safety cameras on our network. Um, and through the annual plan, councillor Harrison had asked about additional surveillance, safety cameras on the network and a memo to you in response to that um, request. But generally, um, N C T A are taking over all of the safety cameras, whether that's speed or red light running. Um, and are coming up with a program, a, a national program to roll out more. Um, and as staff, we continue to advocate for, for them on our network. Um, it's an ongoing conversation.
Okay, and.
Thank you, uh, again, Gemma. Uh, my first question is supplementary to councillor Barbers in relation to the statistics and any data in relation to accidents at that intersection with the slip lane. I asked the same question yesterday and I wrote down the answer and we were told in the briefing that there have not been any reported pedestrian accidents. I asked the same question yesterday and I wrote down the answer and we were told in the briefing that there have not been any reported pedestrian accidents occurring at. That site as a result of the slip road. So can I just clarify what it was then that you were going to follow up with your data?
My understanding from councillor Barber's question was just about any crashes involving. Vehicles or people using the slip lane and having.
So that was my question yesterday and we were told that there were no, there was no data, there was nothing in the system. As a result of that, with that slip lane intersection.
Apologies. My understanding of your question was just around vulnerable road users. So people walking and cycling, not necessarily vehicles as well. So I don't have the data with me about vehicles. But there hasn't been any involving people walking or. And so, yeah, sorry, that, yeah.
Final question then is, can I have some clarity around the depth of the proposed platform? On that slip lane into Madras. When I look at our. Picture on page twenty nine of our agenda, we have seventy five moves for the speed humps on the southern intersections. But on that one, we don't have information about the depth. Is it the same?
It would be the same, yeah.
So you use different language though, you talk about a proposed platform. But then on the other ones, you talk about a proposed speed hump. Are we talking about all one of the same?
So on the southern side, we're just looking at a standard hump. Um, and that would be in advance of the separate crossing. So that would be seventy five kilometers high.
Yep.
And the one on the slip lane going from. Morehouse into Madras would be something more like Papua New Zealand, where you've got the table rather than.
Okay, and what is the depth there?
That would be seventy five.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and the last one, then we'll have a, we'll have morning tea and a break to get ahead around what we're going to do. Department, see you.
Thank you. Following up on a couple of questions that have just been asked around the, the safety aspect and crashes and things. Um, and we did discuss this briefly yesterday. The, the key driver for this particular project is about accessibility rather than safety. There is safety benefits, but it's about giving people access through the area rather than.
I guess, yeah, one, a little, improving accessibility by increasing choice, providing more crossings is what. It is mainly about. There are safety benefits to doing that. Will have safer infrastructure to facilitate your accessibility.
Good answers eleven fifteen. See you back. Okay, thank you very much.
Jimmy, you want to clarify or something?
Yes, a question from councillor Foca earlier around decision making in the Part A. So we just wanted to clarify that by Sam.
Just to confirm, the Plan A map contained in the delegations register, which outlines the metro policy and significance covers both sides of the road. So once the council's made its decision, only the council could revoke that decision. However, any post changes to that could go through the community board as a part A recommendation to cancel.
I see that. What's for the council decision?
That comes back here.
Yeah.
Right now, so we're gonna... Aaron and I had the main one, but Tim has put in an amendment. It's there, which is just the clarity on it.
Yeah, so we just walked through what the motion that's on the table at the moment that's been moved or seconded. So moved by councillor Kieran and seconded by the mayor. That is similar to what's in the report as option A and option B. But councillor Kieran and the mayor have added in these two aspects. And also there have been three things added in at the end, which have been suggested by other councillors and the two, the move-in secretor have agreed to, which is about book turns, requesting staff to look at sequences and timing, and also request staff to investigate options of widening.
And so.
We'll scroll it down.
Scroll up to six again, we might read it.
So if we go back, we'll do speed hump on Gessen.
So the difference, the difference is Tim's amendment.
Very simple. My amendment is with A as staff recommended and keeping the rises and the speed humps. So at Waltham and option, staff's option B at Gessen and Madras, but retain the humps and the rises and support nine, ten and eleven.
So that's just removing the two bits in yellow. It's what Tim's amendment does.
That's for the colour one.
Okay.
So we'll be voting on mine.
Your amendment. So this is, this is Tim's amendment to have it there. Apart from the platform, which is in any way, that the speed humps go in, stay, stay in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a question.
Yes.
So returning to Aaron's first one, I'm just trying to anticipate what happens if the thing happens. Does Aaron's original motion include the raised platform in the slip lane?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the way it goes, if Tim's one fails, it goes to Aaron and mine. And if Aaron and mine fails, it goes to Sarah and.
Okay, so returning then, if this one fails, it goes back to Aaron's. It retains the raised platform on the slip lane, but it removes the other speed humps in the other corners. Thank you.
But it also breathes times the lights, give a bit more room and the whole question.
Thank you.
Okay, Aaron?
So just process question. Tim's is just option A at Barbados and option B at.
Because we had, that one wasn't put as a motion. It's only an officer recommendation. So the actual motion on the table is this one here. And so you can omit that. We did.
We've checked it.
Right.
We've done it before that way.
Okay guys, I agree why and sorry.
It may mean sin. Right, sorry.
You might have said it earlier.
Okay, here we go. We're actually doing very well, Sarah.
Just, I, I, I only hate to mention it because I don't like it, but there is currently on the plans no speed hump at Barbados Street, Karen. So your motion for no speed bump at Barbados Street is irrelevant because there is no speed bump at Barbados.
Okay. One on the map going up.
That intersection.
Yeah, that's on Waltham Road.
Oh, sorry. Well, I was meaning that intersection, but if we want to call it Waltham Barbados.
You said Barbados Street.
God, we should ask the staff for.
Yeah, please, tidy it up.
We've got staff to.
So I guess in terms of the safety for people using the slip lane, we are now giving them priority through the provision of a zebra crossing, which ensures that they have the right to walk across the road. They do still need to wait for vehicles to slow down and stop. But in terms of safety, we are moving, I guess, the, the key thing that would actually make it safer for people crossing that slip lane due to the current high speed of vehicles turning left from Morehouse into Waltham. So in providing the zebra crossing, we are improving safety. But the N38 design guidance, best practice guidance, is that you install traffic calming at the same time to make sure that it's as safe as possible when we're giving priority to cross the road.
So this is this one here important too.
But in, in general, so that would be at Barbados, Waltham, Morehouse, and the slip lanes from Morehouse to Gessen because they're all high speed turns due to the current geometry of the intersection.
Do clarify, in that case, from what you're saying, there is a speed bumper on the street.
So there's a speed hum on Morehouse Avenue for the turn into Waltham.
It's just this called Barbados, Waltham.
Barbados, Waltham.
Yes, it says posted seventy-five million speed.
Can we clarify?
Yes.
Because we've had the council saying there's no.
There is now.
Yeah. Maybe this was called in the report.
There we go.
Sorry, it's a speed bump, yeah.
And so, right. Yeah. Okay. And that one you'll do something down there. Right, I had a question. Then we'll go into debate, I think, otherwise we.
Not sure if you've got the data on this. Would you be able to tell us the average speed that's currently being used going from Morehouse into Waltham?
I don't have that data on me. It's, it's posted at fifty kilometres an hour and the current geometry doesn't require you to slow down to make the change. Only giving way to other traffic coming on Waltham Road is what would make you slow down to make the change.
I see. So you're anticipating that it would be going fifty kilometres. I mean, fifty kilometres now turning into it's okay.
Right, so we'll now jump quickly into debate and discussion. So who would like?
Tim? Look, thank you all very much. Thank you especially to staff. I think both of these designs are outstanding. But when we are looking at this, this has been driven because of the stadium. But events at the stadium of this size that will affect this, what will be six to nine events a year? I mean, that's ridiculous. So the important thing here at these intersections are the other two hundred and forty or sixty days a week where students and others will be normally using these intersections. That's the real crux here. I absolutely believe that the speed humps and the rises do encourage traffic to slow down and makes the environment safer. That's why I'm moving an amendment to keep those in both plans. I think the Waltham Barbados as well and truly overdue, as is the Madras Gessen. And it'd be nice at some stage in the future, as I mentioned, to look at the Manchester intersection to make that safer. But I think now that these have been identified, it is really important to move forward. And I think both the crossings and the safety measures are absolutely crucial. But I do think the slip lane. But I do think the slip lane is Option B and Gessen, Madras should be retained as an essential to keep that traffic flowing. Because there are three parties to this, pedestrians, cyclists and motorists. And I think that is the one that kind of meets all the needs, so I hope to support it, thank you.
Surely. Yeah, Sarah.
Thanks so much. It's been a really interesting session, I'd like to thank all of the people who came along and spoke today, as well as those who took the time to make a submission and to staff processing all of that and having some really clear answers for us. I know that the, the Option B with the slipped lane retained looks like, and, and now the raised platform is still there for the pedestrian crossing, looks likely to pass, given people's comments around the table so far. And while people have clearly understood because of the deputations and submissions about the value of having the, the raised platform there, those same arguments apply to every other slip lane. So it's just that the other slip lanes didn't have a proposal to close them and therefore people didn't speak about the need for a safe crossing into that area. But the same argument apply, so for a pedestrian to get safely to, across a slip lane and into the island, the traffic really does need to be slowed down. They are turning a corner, they should be slowing anyway, they just often don't. They need to be going slow enough so that they could give way if they needed to, but they often don't. We know that this area had a lot of students, you know, for a lot of the year. Plus, there's going to be large, there's a few evenings a year with people being parked on the south side of Morehouse Ave and going to the stadium. I would urge you all to vote in favour of Tim Scandret's amendment, which would enable the additional three really low-level speed humps to be retained to make sure that pedestrians are safe when they're crossing into those slip lanes. While there's lots of students, you know, that we have people with disabilities, we have older residents who are slower to walk across those things and when traffic is fast, it makes it difficult for everyone. So I urge you to vote in favour of Tim's amendment and we'll see where we go from there, thanks.
Thank you, Tony?
Me, is it? Yeah, I killed it. So just to get it out on the table, like both of these intersections are absolute turkeys, right? Like right now, I've spent my life going through them as a, as a student. So I went to school on that intersection and trying to get across that road as a student. It was like a turkey shoot when I was at, when I was at high school trying to get through there. And I still go through both of them as a motorist mostly, rarely as a cyclist, cyclist, because it is just so dangerous going through there. And both Melanie and I personally know a person who was killed on a bike going through one of those intersections. So we do need improvement and, but that said, getting to Ara from that direction is also still a real turkey on existing, the existing cycle network. So any improvements there would be welcome. Still struggle to go through cycle there. But the biggest turkey of all is that slip lane into Madras. And if you really need to use it, you're probably lost running around like a headless turkey. I never drive past there without seeing someone flying into it and then suddenly have to freeze. So I would have supported Option A because I like my turkeys for Christmas and turkeys don't vote for Christmas. But Tim's amendment is an excellent one and I'm very, very happy to support it for the reasons that he outlined and it's a sensible compromise.
Pauline?
We have not similar and thank you for staff for a really good report and briefing yesterday and all the slides and answering all the questions. I originally was going to support the slip lane remaining. Then I heard the deputations and I thought I'd actually better support just removing the slip lane. Now I've gone back to keeping the slip lane because I feel comfortable that staff are addressing the concerns that have been raised by the submitters, that the platform there staying and thank you Erin for agreeing to keep that one, it's really important because that will stop people, as councillor Field said, speeding around there. And also noting too that there is another pedestrian crossing on Madras Street a bit further down. It's a brand new one that brings people from Ara across there, so that will also help things. And I'm quite pleased with the noting provisions in there addressing the cycling concerns that were raised by the submitters. And the mayor has also put one in asking staff to investigate, maybe making a little bit more space there on Madras, Gessen, Morehouse for people to stand and wait. Another reason I've changed my mind to support the slip lane staying was I think that forty to forty-five second delay is quite a long time if we take it out at this stage. So I think, I think Tim's amendment is the right one to support here. I think we'll get the best outcome from this meeting and we can always look at it again later. But I think actually most of the, the foot traffic's going to come out from the stadium on the other side of the street as well, on the eastern side, because why would they cross? And, and I think this is the best outcome, so I'll be supporting councillor Scandret's amendment, thank you.
Samuel? I won't be supporting councillor Scandret's amendment in terms of adding the speed bumps back into the resolution. And it's probably best that I don't say anything else.
Andre Agapansas?
That was actually on, on my list to discuss here, the Agapansas, I was saving that for last, so I won't spoil it. I was gonna pick up on Tyrone's point around turkeys and very familiar with a few turkeys across the road. I would thank staff for sorting this before the stadium opens and not after. Last anyone's road works after it's open. And I, I think Pauline's point is a really, really good one, that most will be crossing on the eastern side because of course the stadium's on the eastern side of Madras Street. And I think these will actually be very, very well used before and after games because there's a whole lot of potential free on-street parking that people will use. There's no two ways about that. But, but like the good old days of Lancaster Park, where you park a wee while away and interestingly enough, you'll probably be able to now park outside Lancaster Park as many will do for the new stadium, which would be nice nostalgia. So I see most of the crossing happening on that side of the road and absolutely I do support removing those damn dirty Agapansas plants which should be banned and removed everywhere, in my view. So I will be supporting councillor Kieran's resolution today, thank you.
Well. Look, I theoretically support my community board's submission for options A at both intersections because this, obviously that closing the name is about pedestrian improvement. And it was pretty clear from the consultation data that we were shown that, you know, the view of drivers and the view of pedestrians and the view of cyclists are all quite different to each other, as you probably would expect. I will support the option amendment for Tim because there's pragmatic thing to do today. But I just wanted to mention a couple of things. So one, when I was crossing at this intersection a month or two ago, I did see a skateboarder, as Callum had referred to, trying to cross at the, the slip lane that's on that block by where the train station is. And this big vehicle was coming and he kind of hesitated, ended up tripping out into the road. So, and yeah, it was a near miss in my view, which I saw from the other side. So that's why I really think that the platforms are really, really important because it can happen not just to little kids, it can happen to anybody. But also with the Waltham intersection aboard the Tyrone and I are on, Hamish Grant was the cyclist that was killed there, very competent cyclist who was actually going for a bike ride up to the hill and got wet there, was in hospital and subsequently died. And he was an amazing volunteer who did a whole lot of things, cycling around, giving food to people and giving pro bono time to his legal work. So what I'm saying is, is that we need to prioritise supporting active transport modes because everyone is a worthy individual and so that's why I support what you're doing.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, look, I'm happy to support this Tim's amendment. Fundamentally, I'm opposed to speed humps. I don't think they give us all the benefits that they're touted to. However, in regard to this, as a compromise to keep that slip lane open, I'm, I'm happy for the speed ups to go in and supporting Tim's.
Yanni, yes, sorry, me, Erin?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how many people have ever had a car crash in a slip lane, but I've had the misfortune of being hit twice in my car where someone's run into the back of me. And I think the point that was made from the submitters is like actually really good. People are busy looking at the traffic coming on, particularly around streets that have higher speeds. So, you know, Brom Street, Morehouse Ave, cars do go quite fast. And actually it is sensible, I think, to make sure that people can look ahead because by times when I've been hit, people have been looking the other way and not seen that I've, I've stopped in front of something coming. So to me, that having speed humps in these areas actually do make, does make a lot of sense. I, I think it does make a safer space for, for, for all. I am particularly concerned that we haven't done enough work around Gessen Street. And I see there's some resolutions here which I strongly support to look at improving the, the width of the cycling space and the pedestrian space. Like it's really obvious that in the future, when Brom Street gets upgraded, we're going to see massive traffic impacts through here. And I think at some point the council should actually get a briefing on Brom Street. I've previously asked one, been told it wasn't anything to do with council, but we know from the work that was done initially, there are a whole bunch of projects in this intersection and this corridor that we were looking at to get better connections for people coming into the city, particularly on things like cycling, cycling, pedestrians and of course also the traffic. I also do want to raise that in the briefings we've had from Kiwi Rail, we've been told that there are discussions going on about Gessen Street. So I don't know when that conversation will happen, but with how we've been treated in the past with Kiwi Rail, we know that when we upgrade these intersections in cycleways, there's a risk that we're suddenly imposed with a huge additional cost. And I would still like us to consider what's happening around that, that because as soon as the stadium is open, this place is going to be massively used. Someone said they don't know whether they're gonna park at the stadium. I'll tell you what people are gonna park based on my experience with Lancaster Park, an area that I represented for a long time. They're gonna park in Sydney and they're gonna walk from Sydney from all the industrial side streets that they've found parking, like they used to do in Philipstown a couple of blocks down to the stadium. And they're gonna cross this intersection and use Gessen Street and Madras Street and Morehouse Ave as a key crossing point. So yeah, I, I personally would be more comfortable removing the slip lane, but I recognise that that doesn't have the support today. I, I do think that's a bit of a shame, I did like the idea that people wanted to talk with the supermarket. And I hope if Option B does go through, that perhaps someone can talk to the supermarket around future land use because it does seem there's possibly another solution there as well, thank you.
Erin?
Yeah, so just a couple of points and thanks for raising that for about the supermarket. That's one of the changes that Phil and I have made to our original. That, and that was based on some of the submissions today. There was some good pictures shown of the poor visibility at that corner. So we've now empowered staff to go away and look at how that can be changed to widen the footpath, not only the footpath, but from the other submission, the cycle lane as well that's going through there. And then there was serious suggestion around the hook turns which come from a submission, so more than happy to include that. All ours is about traffic flow and keeping the traffic flowing in these areas. I struggle to see people coming off Morehouse Ave going into Waltham Road, which isn't a ninety-degree corner. It's closer to fifty-five, maybe sixty at best. And so you're hooking backwards as you go uphill. And so you're going around there at fifty, the odd person would and two o'clock in the morning, no doubt they do, but majority by far don't. One of the concerns I have around putting in the pedestrian crossings and then the raised platform and Mel made a great example of where the person skateboarding across then hesitated and stopped and tripped, they would have gone. They would have had a clear run on their skateboard and would have gone, they wouldn't have hesitated and stopped. And not, something I believe is the reason why the slip lanes don't have vehicle versus people incidents there is that the pedestrians are very cautious because they know the dangers as you go through there. When we make these changes, we are lowering the danger level. So you also will lower, you'll change the behaviour of the pedestrians because they will feel safer. So they will take more risks, so just be warned of that, remembering that putting in speed humps in those pedestrian crossings, we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't actually exist, it's perceived and it is felt by people, but that does mean that you behave more carefully around those situations. More, and yes, this is triggered by the stadium, I agree with that part, but on those big half dozen to ten, hopefully twenty big nights a year that the stadium has, when there's thousands of people coming out of somewhere, all of the traffic behaves differently, whether you've got traffic management or not, people don't go, you know, people don't go ploughing through crowds, you slow right down and, and you have people wandering all over the road, half them might be sourced or whatever. People's driving behaviour changes and that's, that's a good thing because that's just a respect for your fellow human beings. But those, these crossings that have been put in, put forward by staff are great designs for the two sides that have no crossing at all, people run across there anyway, I've done it myself. And further down Morehouse, we need more of them. Like a worse intersection than either of these is the Durham Street by the supermarket there where there's one side with no pedestrian crossing and people will try and get across there. That's even more dangerous than these ones. So the sooner we get further along Morehouse and get some of these done better, so I'd fully support those. But the one thing that Phil and I have done differently here is the speed humps. People of Christchurch don't like speed humps. That's all I'm gonna say to this table, they don't like speed humps. Small percentage do, by far the majority don't. So if you put them in, just remember what it is that you're putting them in and you have to justify it to the voters in your ward that you are all about those speed humps. And it's pretty simple because Phil and I were happy for this to go in, be assessed later on. If there is a danger and people aren't slowing down and giving way at the pedestrian crossings, then we will add the speed humps, we're more than happy to do it later on, once they need it. But until then, we would go back the public on this and not have them.
Okay, right, we're enough. So this is Tim's amendment we're putting in, which puts the, not the raised platform, the speed humps in, back in, more or less, okay? Well, the raised platform's in anyway, so it's just the speed humps are now going in, which we're, maybe we're out. So all of the. Yeah, the slip lane stays in, yeah. All of those in favour of Tim's amendment to put the speed humps back in where they may be taken out? Please say aye. Aye. Against?
Aye. Yeah.
Right. Someone's called division, so I know.
All right, fantastic, so a division in councillor Scandret's amendment, as the mayor just explained. Deputy Mayor Cotter?
Aye.
Barbara?
Yes.
Councillor Coker?
Yes.
Councillor Donovan?
Yes.
Councillor Field?
Aye.
Councillor Harrison Hunt?
Yes.
Councillor Henstock?
No.
The mayor? Councillor Johansson?
Yes.
Councillor Kieran?
No.
Councillor McDonald?
No.
Councillor McClellan?
Yes.
Councillor Moore?
No.
Councillor Peters?
No.
Councillor Scandret?
Yes.
Councillor Templeton?
Aye.
That's ten four.
Yeah, right, so that is carried, so now I will put the, is that right, Erin? I put what I call the Erin and my one with Tim's amendment added into it, which is everything as it was, including the with the raised platform in it and the speed humps everywhere else. So all those in favour of that one? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, against?
No. Just record mine against.
I remember this.
Right, so that is carried. So the four shared motions test.
Yep.
And we go on to.
We got it through, Sarah.
Number six.
I thought you guys were hoping that would fail.
Okay, Jimmy, you're a, no, senior frangers.
Those speed bumps.
Speed bumps are free limit. So we're here to.
So, um, we're here today with the report, um, that's in front of you, asking for approval for staff to implement thirty kilometer an hour variables outside schools as per the land transport rule requirements. Um, we would take the report as read and can answer any questions.
Councillor Skandret is happy to move it and councillor Moore's happy to see question or question it. Question, okay. Have you got second, sorry for start. Have we got a second, uh? Sam, yep, so we've got a couple of questions. We have Andre then Tom.
Uh, the the new rules have made it very difficult to lower speed limits. But how easy do the new rules make it to put a speed limit? For example, where it was sixty and it's gone down to fifty in the last four or five years. How easier is it to then put it back to what it was under the new rules? Do we have to follow those same consultation processes like we like we do now if we're lowering?
Yes, we would still need to follow that process so that we collect community views and preferences on the speed limit change. Um, we would just need to understand why the speed limit would need to be changed. Um, and if there was anything else that we would need to do to support that.
Thank you.
Can you talk a little bit more about what happens if we do nothing?
So if we
Public knowledge.
If we do nothing, as stated in the report, um, the agency can come in um and su- support council to make those changes.
That leads me to my next question, which is the cost to implement this five point eight million dollars, who's paying for that?
So, um, council will pay for that. Um, we have agreed funding assistance rate for fifty-one percent. Um, follow it that was carried over from our last interim speed management plan. So we are seeking funding assistance from the agency. The five point eight million is the higher limit. We're still looking at ways we can look to reduce that through the use of static variables and where we use static variables and electronic variables on the network and make sure that we're um best value out of.
Even if we did nothing, the R C A would then still require us and by law to still pay for it. Okay.
Sorry, we are the R C A.
Yeah.
So, the, sorry, the government.
Yeah.
Oh, mine's just supplementary to councillor Harrison Hunt. So just confirming that there is funding available for this piece of work in our existing budget and there's no additional impact on rates.
There is funding, but yes, um, in the on plan.
And no impact on rates.
Thank you.
All right, and Andre.
Sorry, ju- just to pick up on one point, if we did nothing, all the schools that don't have thirty zones now will never have thirty zones if we did nothing. Cause there's a lot of signs to go up.
Through the cheer with that, that is unless the agency come and make us put them all in.
Yeah, right, this is, yeah, this is good. No more questions. Is there any discussion, any debate? I don't think so. All those in favour, aye, against? Thank you, that's carried. Brilliant, thank you very much. You go, go home. Go back to head office. Right, um, we have tsunami alerting system review. I'm having to say. This is common sense all the way. And for Brendan's
Brendan, how are you morning?
Um, is it any, we've all read it, is there any questions of that us? Celeste? And he's got one while Celeste's getting ready. Oh, yeah, right, right, Yanni, Yanni then turn then Celeste.
So just under point seven, when we had the feedback from the board, uh, from community board, I I raised the concern that we're focusing a lot of time and attention on the tsunami risk, which is incredibly low probability, uh, obviously very significant consequence versus the flooding hazard, which is very high probability. And probably, you know, can be medium, low to medium consequences. So I'm just trying to understand, like, how can we, how can we get work done around, again, we need around resilience on more than just tsunami hazards as part of this, given that things like flooding are something that's real and impacts people?
Uh. Pedro, Pedro, the questions, yes, on the scope of his paper.
Exactly what I should have said.
Seven, that says notes to change the tsunami building system, integrate project implementation through new tsunami iteration zones, coming to an installation of signage and increased community education and resilience building programme. Like
No, he's a sudden.
It's just, is there a capacity within that work to include more hazards than just tsunami? Like, if you're going into a community and doing, you know, resilience and education, are you able to include issues like flooding that happens in a much more regular?
Uh, it always is, so, um, four main hazards that the city faces, there's many more than that, four main is the city faces are always included in resilience planning. Uh, in some cases, we'll talk to communities about seasonal risk, coming into the fire season, for example, going around. But in the majority of cases, we're talking to the community that all hazards, which includes flooding.
And when I've asked for a copy of the civil defence force plans, it it's very good at a high level. But there's a lack of very specific local community information around the response. As part of this process, the areas that I represent, like Woolston, which is kind of, you know, it's it's got some of the area where the tsunami risk is and back charging areas. Um, when you have very discreet plans for those local communities, but specific, so that people can see exactly kind of what the thinking is around how to manage it at that level.
Uh, the answer to that is, um, ideally. And, uh, detailed planning is still in its infancy. The science and the scenarios, intelligence we need together. Uh, the planning at a macro level and the planning at a micro level, there's still a lot of work to be done. The ideal scenario would be that detailed, tested, um, reviewed plans in place, that would be the ideal scenario.
Good, thank you, Brendan, that's good. Um, Celeste, do you?
Uh, yeah, I've got a few, um, coming in. Um, obviously, this is quite an important report for um those of us that re- represent coastal areas. So, just starting with the the memo that was produced in twenty twenty-three, that talked about a report to council. Just talk us through what's been happening over the last, what led up to that and then we were basically saying, cause it's been about a year and a half since then and we haven't had an update on what.
Sure, yeah, yeah, um, uh, this same question was responded by email to previously. Uh, also, we discussed it earlier this week and um and in the report, it details the uh the most, it's in the process that's taken place. Over that period for the civil defence team, there had been uh the Port Hills fires, a number of weather events, uh, and also the resulting recovery efforts that go on post those event as well. So, there's been um considerable effort, work, research, consultation, engagement, et cetera, put into getting this report on the table. Um, it's it's arrived now. There may well be other reasons I'm unaware of, but I can assure you, so the defense team's been making a committed effort to getting it.
In in terms of making sure that there aren't any further delays in terms of speeding this up, what, uh, would the team require any additional resources as part of the?
Uh, pending the decision today, um. Yeah, yeah, we'll need advice. Um, the effort around, regardless of the decision to say, there is going to be additional effort put into understanding and educating the community on a tsunami risk. That will require results. What that means, I don't know.
So we'll get some information. In regards to the the number of sirens, I know that that hasn't been determined, but is there, I think in a report, they were talking about sort of roughly areas of the world, but are you able to give any sort of feedback at this moment? Cause a lot of people will be watching online and just wanting to understand with the remaining sirens, where they go, they're actually there as a secondary system to cover areas that might not otherwise. Someone's out swimming, you know, um, that don't have their phone.
Uh, not yet, didn't take an expert risk analysis. Uh, I guess the best analogy I can draw at this point is Auckland City has gone through a similar process recently. They had forty-two sirens, I believe, which is a similar number to us. And even with the population of being one million plus, they've reduced the siren coverage from forty-two to two. So just to draw that analogy, I expect we'd be doing something similar.
Um, and in terms of next steps after today, what, are you able to give us sort of a timeline in terms of implementation or are we sort of playing in terms of what the next steps would be?
Uh, no, I don't have a specific timeline. Pending the decision today, there's still a whole heap of work to be done. There's um challenges around uh system procurement, depending on what sirens we may choose to go after. The the procurement will be affected. Um, the workload and um and how that's rolled out is lordly understood, but not not explicitly understood.
Um, and then just a final couple for me. I know that being experts that you are, you can explain some simple um things. But in terms of like areas that maybe previously had patchy coverage, you able to just explain how the primary system works? To give maybe people who are watching reassurance, um, fact. Um, situation, how that would function?
Sure, yeah, and maybe now's a good time to just uh introduce Rachel Hunter's staff member uh of ours, who's just recently returned from the UK, where she picked up her environmental science PhD in the New Zealand tsunami warning system. So, literally at the table, um, the experiment table. So a number of things have happened with the uh the tsunami warning system, uh, and the emergency mobile alert over the last couple of years. The sirens were put in before emergency mobile alerts were, I think. Um, over that time, the science has evolved considerably and so has the events of the E M A network. You're now more towers, more phones, almost a hundred percent coverage across the entire region. The use of E M A to receive them and understand what they mean to them has increased from thirty-three to sixty percent to seventy-five to ninety-one percent.
Yeah, it's about ninety percent every time we, every time the E M As are tested, around ninety percent of people are receiving those alerts or they're near enough to somebody else who's received the alert. So it might be if you were in your home, you might not receive that alert, but your partner who you live with might be receiving that alert, so you're still getting that same information.
Internationally, two thirds is considered to be the threshold where a warning becomes um, becomes effective, the ultimate becomes even more effective. There in the, in the report, it also mentions the seven step processes that people drive through the proceedings alerts. And those ships are hearing it, which sirens are understanding it, so sirens fall down there, believing it. And by this point, sirens are becoming less and less credible. It is about personalising it, responding to it. Um, is a piece of area confirmation and decisions as well. So, the E M A, your phone when it goes off, allows you to go through that seven step process. Whereas a siren only gives you arguably one and a half parts of it. So just also for reassurance for the community too, cause I understand there's some concern uh, the emergency mobile alerts that you receive on your phone aren't sent over the text network. So people I've I've, I understand have been saying during the earthquakes here, the phone system was overloaded. And the text, so they think these, um, people could, but they could text. And that aside, these emergency mobile alerts come on on a different channel, so they won't be overloaded. So we have almost a hundred percent coverage. Um, in terms of phone ownership, we have almost a hundred percent coverage in terms of phone area. We've got telicos that are on board. It's a system owned and operated by the government that comes at little to no cost to us. Here, except as taxpayers, it's robust, it's internationally recognised as best practice. Then G N S, Science, N E M A and the New Zealand Tsunami Working Group all support not all sirens as a primary part of the tsunami, so the tsunami warning.
And just finally, those alerts, if you're being, for instance, the
All good? Tim and then Andre, you begin the call.
Um, at some stage, um, and welcome, is this the first time at the table? And lovely reports, so great. Um, with regards to lessons learned elsewhere, you you've mentioned that other areas going from three areas to to one, et cetera. It would be really good at some stage to look at those lessons learned and the um journey then from other, not obviously here, but at some stage. So we've got to be understanding and we're talking to our our community boards, et cetera.
Quite a lot of work's gone into that already. Uh, of the twenty-seven municipalities in Japan that were affected by the tsunami there, um, been a few years ago. Seventeen of those municipalities, their tsunami systems failed.
Wow.
Contributed to their death toll. So, um, and there's a number of other lessons there that were recorded, so we're really confident. We are 100% confident that the recommendation given today is a rotten.
And there've been lots of reviews that have been conducted around New Zealand as well, so Brendan's already mentioned that one. Reduced their sirens all the way down to just two, when they had over forty beforehand. Um, similar reviews have been conducted for Hawks Bay and also Bay of Plenty as well. And then, um, very similar findings to us where they have that uh emergency mobile alert as their primary method. And then lots of infill methods in that multimodal system with television, radio, social media, websites, and then sirens uh, only in those areas where um the E M A coverage might not be as good.
I've seen those videos in Japan, which are, you know, scary ears, but the sirens were going and people just kept driving like normal. It was, it's quite amazing. So, no, thank you very much for the report, Rachel, welcome.
And Andre, then we'll, then we'll move on.
Uh, yeah, I I understand what you're saying around the primary. Um, out of, I'm, well, just what I'm not quite keeping my head around is why there's still why there'd be a reduction and why you wouldn't have multiple methods to to full proof, right? That's, that's just not the part I'm quite understanding and why you're lessening out than what was there currently.
So.
I'm just not giving that part away, wouldn't, is it not more than a million?
So, absolutely, if the system was not as outdated and not, it's not very fit for purpose. So essentially, what we wanna do is we wanna take this multimodal system, like you say, that has lots of different parties for us, to get messaging to as many people as possible. We want each of those options within the multimodal system to be as effective as possible. And currently, um, with the situation we have with our sirens in Christchurch, um, it is not um an effective option anymore. There are too many um issues that make that system fragile. That means that we do not have the confidence that we would be able to activate those sirens and to use them, um, if we, if we needed them. Um, the most recent example of that was when we tried to test them, uh, very recently in April, when uh we had daylight savings and the test unfortunately failed. So if that was drawing a real event and we're putting effort into trying to activate those sirens that aren't working, that could mean that people are perceiving, well, actually, there is no threat, the sirens haven't gone off. When actually there is a threat, but we just cannot activate that system. So that might cause confusion if you're getting alerts from different methods, but the sirens haven't gone off. People might be thinking, what's going on here? Why is that confusion happening? So that's what we want to be avoiding within the system. We wanna make it simplified and make it effective.
And just like, for for our benefit, so let's say, I'm I'm talking to Joe Boggs down at the pub and might live near the beach, doesn't use his cellphone. How, how, how do I explain to them that where there was a siren near you, there will be no longer? But but we are also trying to improve the the alert system. That's just the part, I I I'm not, I I don't quite understand how we're gonna be able to go forward if that comes and 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 what we're doing.
There's, there's parts of this, the warning system that, uh, it's in the report, but um just to to bubble it back to the surface. Um, all a likely source tsunami, you will be no official alert, it will be long or strong get gone. So if you feel the earthquake, you see the sea retreating, you should follow those natural hazard signs and depart. Um, if there is enough time to send a warning, we want that warning system to be robust and that is the emergency mobile alert. In all of those circumstances, there will be people that um don't have their phone on or don't use a phone. And that's only a small minority in New Zealand now, but there will still be some people. So this, the um, the key here is not more technology, better societal connection. So, um, to to your analogy, you're at the pub with your mate. If he doesn't have a phone, the responsibility is on you and him to connect with each other. So when you get the alert, you connect with your mate who doesn't have the phone, so you can help him out, same as the older people and the younger people as well.
I live in Holes when he lives on the beach, you know.
So he'll have a neighbour, but he'll have, you know, it's it's not, so it's not you specifically, I'm talking about the, the community connection of people that wrap around and his friends, his neighbours, his community, his faith group, his sports club, et cetera.
Thank you, and lastly, Yanni.
Just, um, just wanted to understand, in the event of power failure,
Just um, just wanted to understand, in the event of power failure, what happens? Obviously, we saw Cyclone Gabrielle, there was significant loss of telecommunications because of loss of power. So are you able just to clarify what would happen in that case?
Yeah, so Cyclone Gabrielle and a tsunami, uh uh they need to be facetious of different events. Um, they cellphone towers lose power, um they they'll lose electricity and then they'll immediately flick over to battery. And the battery will enable this message to get sent out for hours afterwards. So there'll be more than enough time for the tsunami expert panel to make the recommendation to send the EMA. Hours and hours further down track, if there's been a uh tsunami which has triggered a power cut and the batteries have failed. At that point then, um, uh past the point where an EMA will need to be sent. So in these circumstances, it's not good.
Right, so so what we've been told in the past too is that the far range tsunami sources, something happens in South America. You know, if it happens in the middle of the night, then it could take hours before it gets to us. You're saying that it'd still be a risk that by the time it got here, we wouldn't be able to communicate, we'd be able to communicate once even happens.
Well, it's unlikely that a earthquake in Chile is going to.
Right.
Great, good answers, good questions. Right, okay. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna put this, but before I do that, I'd just like to thank Brendan and the team because you've been working on this for eighteen months, two years, a wee bit longer. And, you know, we had um, we've got an old outdated expensive system, which is expensive to maintain. So this, I feel, is a great result. So everyone's on the right track, I'm sure. So I'll put this motion all those in favour. I'm right against, brilliant, thank you, carry on.
We're gonna know.
Two knows.
Two knows, okay.
It's in the negative corner.
Aaron, my my ninety two year old grandmother has a smartphone, pretty sure most people have.
You think so?
You gotta get your calls served.
They don't.
We should go search.
We're going on, number eight, we're up to development contributions rebate schemes. So we've got Ellen and um we've got John here for the needs health, Ellen's lower.
Right, so um throughout the review of the development contribution policy, um we had briefings with uh with you where you expressed an interest in considering development contribution rebate schemes alongside the adoption of the policy. Um, and just to remind you, rebates sit outside the policy, they sit under the development contribution rebate policy. Um, and intended to help the council implement um its strategic development goals. Um, so you provided guidance to staff as to your rebate preferences and workshops on the sixth of May and the nineteenth of May. And as a result, we have drafted two rebate schemes for your consideration. So the first is the existing demand credit rebate scheme, um which provides a rebate for expired existing demand credits within the four apps of the central city, um where the structure is in place on or after the first of March twenty twenty four. Um, a building is considered demolished, it if it no longer is considered, sorry, if it no longer contains growth floor area as per the provisions of the development contribution policy. So essentially, the building still needs to contain exterior walls and a roof. Um, and the scheme is set at five million dollars. Uh, the other scheme is central city high density residential rebate scheme, uh which provides a rebate for development within the four apps, uh where the residential component comprises at least six stories. And that scheme is set at two million. Um, and we've proposed that both schemes expire on the thirtieth of June twenty twenty seven, um which should broadly align with the introduction of development levies. Um, rebate expiry dates can always be extended later if required, and you've done this in the past with other rebate schemes. Um, so subject to your agreement, we will commence consultation in these rebate schemes. Um, consultation will run for three weeks. Um, submissions will be asked for the views on various aspects of the scheme and and on the overall pot of um revenue foregone to progress these schemes. Um, and this will give some council, council some options and making decisions in August on the rebate schemes.
And this, that if the money runs out earlier or it's twenty twenty seven when the government's new system comes in.
Yeah, so we'll see what the legislation looks like and um it could be that you choose to extend these schemes um in conjunction with development levies, but we can think of that um once we know more information about what the levies are.
Okay. See, uh, Jake, sorry.
A question that popped into my head just as you were talking was around, um, so the DC, um, what what stop is it that the building is defined as having walls and a and a roof? And what, why is that different to how we treat vacant land sites? For example, there's a site that is, the seagulls are, it's essentially being under our policies. Must be a different policy as as being a building and therefore um not vacant.
Um, so the criteria that is included in these schemes reflects the feedback that we got from you. So what we heard from you is that you wanted um the expired credits with that scheme to be limited to buildings that were standing. So that's why we've um put both parameters around that rebate scheme um in that process.
Okay, said.
Um, can I just play, I've got an amendment which is just, and the team have got it, it's just to widen the consultation to potentially include vacant sites, so it's things like car parks and things like that. Um, if the scheme's got a limited time or a limited pot of money, it's just going, how do we turbocharge the CBD? In in terms of doing that, so it's just uh when we do do it, whether we can just have a consider. I mean, I'm happy to move the whole thing, including that as a recommendation, um to get it on the table.
Can you just explain that again?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, so.
I know you've got it sorted in your head, I was trying to catch up.
That often means it's not sorted in.
I called you out.
Effectively, all it is, is to open up the consultation to go, there's the buildings, but there's also like, they'll, I won't use the company name. There's also car parks and things like that that are sitting in in the city and going, the expired credits that would sit on those. Given there's a change coming in terms of what the government is signalling, whether we can open it, knowing the pot of money's still the same, open it going, this will be the carrot that hopefully speeds up some development in the CBD in this narrow window, so it's.
Which would ultimately mean that if they developed on, then we get them.
You'd get the rates and but you'd also get the additional development contributions by bringing forward the development. Yeah.
Now, what what Sam is um talking about is say, a car park had five development contribution credits on it. And someone builds a building with fifteen, they only get the credit for what the underlying was, am I correct?
Then we'd get ten that we, that we necessarily don't leave as.
But Ellen.
And it's only the consultation, so it's not a.
Ellen, if if we bring in what Sam's suggesting, that will gobble up the five million a lot quicker, won't it? Like a lot.
Particularly if you can, if you brought in the scheme and backdated it to the first of March twenty twenty four, um likely you would use maybe maybe two to three million off the bat. Um, so we can consult on um funding options for the scheme. So um we've set it at five, but we can ask the public if they would be willing to foregone money to broaden the scheme.
I think that uh.
You might want to consider making that pot of money bigger if you were to extend the scheme.
Thank you, that, what can I, yeah, do you have a, I can clarify, because it's, it's, so this is consultation, we could refine the policy after the consultation. So it might be that for these ones, we go, we're not backdating, this is for the empty sites now, to go, how do we do it? Because that would be the thing, my intent is how do we actually drive stuff in the CBD now, not retrospectively. So we'd get some feedback and then work through it as opposed to going, cool, we're backdating vacant land, yeah.
Back to you once we've um consulted the public.
But we would want people to play the game because people could rush in and go, oh, I've got this empty car park, I'll check out, um, building consent in for this. Gobble up all the, a lot of the build, um, the credits and then not build the thing, so that everyone.
So you only receive the rebate once you have passed your first building inspection. Um, so that ensures that the development does actually go ahead um before we give them a rate.
Um, probably for, I was just wondering, we did something, can't recall exactly what it was about, but in terms of DCs, we did a consultation around DCs a few months ago.
Yeah.
Do you know what the uptake was on that one?
How many submissions we got?
Yes. Forty four.
I think.
Okay, so do you see anything different that's going to be going into this consultation?
Anything different, like numbers?
Uptake.
Um, it's a possibly an easier to digest dis- discussion rebates rather than um policy. And more, but it's still niche, right? So, um, yeah, I I couldn't say.
Do you remember the majority of those who actually gave submissions? Do you remember the majority of those people, where they came from?
Um, developers or?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Because we'll, we'll get on with, so Sam's putting, has moved it to include that because you say it's only for consultation. Yeah, isn't it?
Yeah.
Right. If you haven't had the consultation, I'm happy to see you. All right, we're all through, okay. Right, so um, if you guys have any consultation, I don't think there's anything.
Oh, yeah, all right. Yeah, no, I I won't be supporting this because principally there's there's no proof that um this actually incentivises anything at all. Uh, zero proof, and actually, I highly suspect that it doesn't, we don't. DCs aren't a huge contributor in the cost of building anything. It's not the stick, it's not the carrot we would want it to be. Um, and actually, if it isn't incentivising any new development, what we're actually doing is quite perverse. We're actually taking money from everyday ratepayers and giving it to big CBD property developers, which is I, I think I was once accused of being a mentally deranged Robin Hood, but this really is. Uh, and this really is a perverse Robin Hood scheme.
I'm gonna argue something.
That being said, I I won't be supporting this today.
Any, uh, Yanni then, Aaron?
Yeah, um, like, I I I agree with, um, she's a comment from my colleague. Uh, like what we know through the G C P, when we've actually been asking and asking for more work to be done on the social and affordable housing uh plan, is that actually, um, unless we're more deliberative around um intervening and, you know, to quote, specifically if the government or council intervene in the market to build more non-market housing will provide greater assistance, then affordability outcomes for lower income households could be greatly improved. But then conversely, attempts to influence the market outcomes and the continuum in terms of market sale price or rents are likely to mostly impact households on medium or high incomes. Most, who for the most part have less of an affordability issue than lower income households. So um effectively, what the G C P work research has shown, is that councils who have recently adopted enabling planning frameworks, which could encourage encourage more marketplace housing, this is unlikely to assist in the supply of affordable housing for the neediest low income households. So, you know, I find it ironic that we would give money to some of the wealthiest people in our city from rates. Um, while at the same time, we don't put any rates funding in towards our social housing. Like, it seems uh not the right approach in my view, given that we've just enabled uh for people that own land, uh a whole bunch of extra zoning capacity through B C fourteen. I would much rather we looked, if we wanted to address the issue of housing affordability, we need to be looking at things like inclusionary zoning. We need to be looking at taking a a percentage of the development uh and putting it towards social and affordable housing. So in my view, this isn't the right approach, um this is the wrong approach, this is prioritising. Uh, I think people at the higher end of the market, rather than intervening to help the people at the bottom. And so I do not agree. This, I think last time we did this, we effectively ended up subsidising a whole bunch of Airbnbs to be built in the city. Uh, and we didn't get any increase, in in my view, in affordable or social housing for the people that need it the most.
Hey, um, Andre?
Thank you. So last time, uh, what the DC rebates didn't incentivise was building up in the central city. What was, what we need to be doing, what everyone wants us to do, what every association tells us to do, incentivised building two or three storey places, which is what happened, which to me in prime spots is a, is to be honest and frankly, it's a big waste of space. There's a prime spots you need to be building up at. And what's in there potentially is incentivising six stories and above, which is exactly what we need in our central city. Um, staff very, very clearly told us last time that we can avoid it ending up being full of Airbnb's. Um, that advice is very, very clear. And if we end up with more Airbnb's, more accommodation, don't necessarily think that's the end of the world either. Um, and if it doesn't work, does incentivise more of these types of buildings, it won't cost us because that's how the the policy works. So it wasn't anything to be worried about or scared of. Worst case scenario, or sorry, best case scenario, we end up with more appropriate buildings in our city centre. We end up actually getting towards that target of a population in the city centre. Um, and we can all live happily ever after. But if it doesn't work, it's not going to cost money, so I don't see the harm here. Those buildings aren't being built currently, there's bugger all of them, they've been built six stories above the central city. And and it's a real shame, should be taking advantage of making most of that space. If this policy does that, if there are better ideas on how to encourage building six stories above the central city, bring this to the table, I'm keen to talk about them.
Okay, good man. Uh, Yanni, it's in Eric. Sort of like a rubber stamp. He's got a question.
Yeah, um, I'd just like to say, I'll copy and paste literally everything that Councilor Moore just said. Um, that was really succinct and thank you. Uh, so without repeating it, I beg them watch it back later for a lesson on how to incentivise going up in the inner city. This is great. I thought we were voting on it going up to consultation and hearing from the public. Uh, it's not a final decision as far as I'm aware. It's having a conversation with the public about doing exactly what Councilor Moore said. And exactly what Councilor Moore said is what a lot of the public have been telling us for years. So I can't see how we can lose in this, uh except for there will be the the problem of a lot more ratepayers in the inner city giving us more money towards the city coffers. I mean, there is that old chestnut, but beyond that, I'm I'm happy to support it.
Back place.
Sorry, white nonsense.
Building on there, um, going to get consultations are good. So happy to to have a consultation here from, you know, those that can help us with this um changing of some gravel pits in the in the CBD. Citizens around the mountain. The stay in the fact that there's a lot of gravel pits and car parks. So anything we can do to encourage and supercharge that and bring the development forward would be beneficial indeed. If we get back through the consultation, that that must would help them get in to um being later. It's quite the opposite then, hey, look, this is consultation, we listen, we then plan our way forward as we bring this in. Happy to support it.
All right, so on this, um, the main reason I wanted to do this uh was there's a number of people around town who have spent a hell of a lot of money on doing up old buildings that are still standing. Now, in one particular instance, say it had a hundred toilets in it, a hundred rooms, a hundred toilets in it. We were donging them for more development contribution when that already, it was already a standing building. It might have had a hundred and one toilets in it, it doesn't matter, it's the same load on our infrastructure as the old building was that maybe had DCs on it earlier. So that was just to give these people some incentive. Um, the other thing is too, they haven't bowled the old building, which has saved a lot of um uh demolition cost, carbon, all that sort of thing, they've done up some more um sort of nicer old buildings. And I can think of a couple straight off the bat. But that was to help those guys just get across. And in another particular instance, one building had, say, thirty rooms or whatever. These people are going to put an extra twenty rooms on top, so they're more than happy to pay for the extra twenty on top because it's extra, but the thirty underneath is what they were looking at because the thirty will still be there. So that's where I was thinking with this, okay? Sammy, uh, sorry, Tyler, then Sam.
Thanks for that, Mr. Me, I didn't 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 um think about that aspect that you've provided. And the same thing goes for Castle McClellan, which I support too. But something that also incentivises development is actually building a seven hundred million dollar stadium and a five hundred million dollar sports centre. Those are the things that actually help the developers actually hurry up and do it. Because if there's no market for it, then they will not build. They don't want to be paying something where it's going to be for lease for the next two or three years. So the things that we're doing right now is actually pretty good. Um, in principle, this is only going up for consultation, so I'm going to support this. But I just want to just um to to straighten out the the path in saying, there is more levers to the way that developers develop quicker by actually adding more social and uh social infrastructure and third spaces within the city that makes it a more vibrant place to live, therefore the developers will want to build there. It's pretty simple, um, and that's all I've got to say about that.
Okay, um, and lastly, Sam. Yeah, um, thank you. I mean, I think the point's been well made that this is just going up to consultation. Actually, if we wanted to encourage uh development in the CBD, the one thing we would give people is certainty on our planning decisions around the roads and things like that that we change. Um, we can't seem to do that as an elected council. And so I think actually this is another mechanism to speed things up. You know, if you take a a building that is standing now, uh or a vacant car park site that there have been expired DC credits on, actually, the city makes more money out of that long term having it developed. It it lines up with what Tyler said in terms of the investments we've made, but if this is.
It, it lines up with what Tyler said in terms of the investments we've made, but if this is the thing for the next two years that speeds up growth in the city, when actually the economy's still pretty tight, um, this has got to be a good thing for the city. If you took a hotel where we could rebate three hundred thousand dollars of existing credits, they pay more DCs because they're doing it, and then we get a million dollars a year in rates, that's actually a really good thing and not something that developers benefit from. It's something that the city benefits from, so this is something to move it on. Uh, and if we can, and I, you know, hopefully, um, representatives from the central ward are of, of the same view, we can actually get some more people into the CBD and fix a lot of the buildings that haven't been fixed, or actually convert some of the car parks that are now car parks. Uh, I think that would be a good thing. This is consultation. Do you say woke work? No, no, no. Not, certainly not woke work.
Don't want to slay.
But we know his slogan for the next election, so that is. So, let's put this up to consultation, let's hear from the people, and if we can get some of those buildings, uh, developed where we are getting more DCs, because they will pay more DCs on them, they will then pay more rates on them. That is actually a good thing for the city council coffers, but a wider benefit for everybody living in the city.
Okay, so we've got, um, a mover and seconder, so I will put that motion that's up there behind me, all those in favour?
Aye.
Against?
No. It's a simple division.
Division.
It's a division. It's a basic math division, this one.
Yeah.
Certification that's be inclusive of. Additional. You didn't want that put separately. All together, great. Okay, so that is the, then a division on recommendations one through five for the development contributions through the scheme. Councillor Q and.
Uh, yes.
Councillor McClellan.
No.
Councillor McDonald.
Yes.
Councillor Hensock.
Yes.
Councillor Moore.
Yes.
Councillor Scandrit.
Yes.
Councillor Harrison Hunt.
Yes.
Councillor Coker. Councillor Peters.
Yes.
Mayor. Councillor Barber.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Cotter.
Yes, but please.
Councillor Fields. Councillor Johansson.
No.
Councillor Donovan. Councillor Cotter's absent.
Okay, there's Kerry, thank you very much. Right, now we'll move on to number nine, discretionary response fund. This is, this, Lane de Stoves on your face, I wouldn't have moved it.
Yep, second.
Tyler? Seconded? It's all those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Thank you, see Gary. It's Kerry.
Thank you very much for the year funding, it's been very good.
Okay. Council submission on the regulatory standards bill.
Second, do we just write?
No, we need.
Ty Brian, such a Melanie sick.
Can you say it's a joke?
Well, there is some good old man coming up, granny flats. Bring on the granny flats.
Uh, afternoon.
Yeah, good afternoon, um, I'll take it as read, um, we're seeking council approval for the submission on the regulatory standards bill. Um, so, yeah, the submission in itself doesn't support the bill in its current form, but it does acknowledge, um, aspects that we agree with. Um, however, we're seeking some, uh, clarity and some key changes for our support.
Any questions? Good point.
Excellent, but still on three point, three point three, is concerned the new mechanisms proposed could introduce unnecessary compliance costs and confusion instead of enhancing regulatory quality, can you kind of outline what some of those could possibly be?
Yeah, so it's uncertain what the additional costs or resourcing would be. However, what we're acknowledging that already is significant, um, oversight across regulation in place. So there's regulatory impact statements, uh, we ourselves as a council are subject to, um, quite extensive requirements, um, such as the, uh, Bill of Rights and, uh, other aspects of the L G A and all of those things that provide us with the oversight that we have in terms of our regulation. Um, so it's unclear how this new regime will interplay with that. And it seems to be, uh, duplicating it rather than providing a improvement as such.
So you're saying that the, um, additional costs have been setting up a diff, a new regulatory body, but not necessarily additional costs for our council?
Well, that's where the uncertainty is, we don't know how it's going to be applied to us and how it's going to be applied to our, uh, secondary legislation. So, there's a possibility, um, that, that adapt, um, and we may be subject to duplicate regimes in terms of our regulatory quality.
Right, that's good.
Just a short one, uh, just three point, two point two, um, absence of treaty considerations. Um, isn't that implicit in everything we do and look at in any way?
It is, um, however, so it is in terms of the L G A and other, um, statutory requirements that we have. However, this is proposed as being the standard for what is considered, uh, quality regulation. Uh, and that being absent, um, it has a risk that it may trickle down in terms of the assessment of any of the secondary legislation that we have, but also other central government agencies and whatnot. Um, they don't need to have that as part of their regulatory consideration. So, under this particular framework. So, the, the risk is that, uh, it, for future legislation, future regulation, it may have a chilling effect in terms of, um, yeah, so it might be the right thing to do, however, because it's going to be, uh, not assessed in terms of, uh, the, what is considered quality regulation. Legislation from having those sort of considerations as part of it.
So, may, it may?
There's mays, yes. There's a lot of uncertainty around the implementation of this bill, what it would look like, how it will apply to us, how it will apply to other agencies, the enforceability of it, um, and what it will lead on to. So there, there are a lot of mays. Um, however, as a framework in itself, um, there's concerns around the narrow scope of it and the treaty considerations, um, is one of those parts.
All right, thanks very much, well, that's very clear, thank you very much, I'll put that.
Hang on, can I just say something?
Yes, you can.
I think this is a really, really excellent submission, and I'll be really brief, but, um, the thing is that once again, we see, um, our local government authority being undermined potentially with this. And in actual fact, it doesn't really, um, as you've said in your submission here, it doesn't really align with our established constitutional role. Um, we've got the risk of duplication unnecessarily, we've got the risk of extra costs, um, um, public policy's not been taken into account. There's a lot of negatives here that have been rightly pointed out, plus there's a lot of unknowns still. So I just want to congratulate you and staff on this excellent, uh, submission once again and, um, totally support it.
All right, with that, I will put this, everyone and all, all those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Thank you, that's carried. We're rocking on through it now, we are up to number eleven, council submission on the building and construction of granny flats. Standalone twi, small standalone dwelling.
You don't have to put granny in them.
Sexist, there's no grandpa flats.
He's already said.
It's talking about wrinkly spotted.
Grandfather out and two wives.
Far away, Stephen.
I've got, um, David up here today, so, they're on the building team unit. Um, so this submission focuses on the changes required to the building act. Um, and, uh, for the, uh, standalone, uh, small dwell, small standalone dwellings. Um, and, uh, Kerry is concerned for council around three, three point six of the submission and full draft to the, to the report as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Questions, please, anyone? Tyler, you like?
Uh, yesterday I asked about the wastewater and connecting it to the, the infrastructure. Uh, you've said here, um, you've added a recommendation which is connect to existing on-site systems that has sufficient cap, capacity for the increased overflow. So just to be clear, we can make the call, you're asking that we make the call on any increased flow, on any of our infrastructure, on almost the building granny flats. But is that correct? So we still have the power, because I would say yes or no, to these, um, buildings coming in.
If, if the, and us as an epic utility operator has got the system in place, yes, we still got control over that.
Yeah, that's cool, thank you.
Right, Mel, oh, that, yeah, you and Tyler, was it one? Time again? Okay. Thank you very much. Right, uh, Aaron, please.
So on the three point six point two, um, the ability for a person to avoid completion for financial gain, doesn't that really apply to houses? Like, if you don't get your final sign off, aren't you still paying clearly and rates and stuff like? Like, if I go buy a house, say I own a section that's got nothing on it, uh, my rates are rated on the section. If I don't get final sign off, I don't pay rates on a house in a section until I've got final sign, or was that changed?
Well, this is about the development contributions which may get paid.
Right.
So, rather than, uh, the rates, there's, there's about the development contribution.
Yeah, but doesn't that already apply to rates on a property anyway, or that will change? Because I, I know that's, that's for DCs, but does, can't you already do that?
No, I, I'm sorry, I think what Aaron's saying, because the D C, if he buys a section in Horswell, the D C's already paid on it by the developer. He builds a house, and at the moment, as far as the computer thinks, he's just paying rates on a section because he's never had the house finished.
Signed off.
Yeah, signed off, so that's, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
Sure.
So, so as a fact, then, then we're, we're making a submission calling something out that we don't like. It's, it applies to something we already do on way bigger amounts, because your annual rates in my neighbourhood would be three years with the DCs.
Uh, the, the rating parts outside of the new act. So, we, so we just submit on building changes.
Yes, but we're, we, we're, we're really doing it over here, but we're saying over here, no, we don't like it, but, but that's my question. But it's not relevant.
Yep.
I.
Any, any more questions?
I don't understand if they've answered the question.
Different, giving you a good answer, he just hasn't thought of it yet.
Well, I mean, we've called out this, that we can, it's impacted by the changes. So, the, the bit on the rates part, um, is not something we can submit on as part of this submission. Um, I, I understand that, that, that might perhaps we already do, but, um, we, we can, what we're trying to do is ensure that we do get those development contributions as part of the same, if they don't complete the, the full process.
We just, we just, see if we can catch the, the thinking off.
What's for my question? Yep. Oh, no, don't worry, I'm not getting beat for that, they, if, it won't change anything. I just, I'm just, my question was around.
Existence, eh?
Yeah, it's not like, you know.
Anyway, you're lucky he's gone.
Well, okay.
All that's suggesting is we want to have a definitive completion date and, uh, someone's out, and you pay for us so that we can.
And that was my question, because we don't do that on the.
Uh, well, we've got, last, we've got also regulated times we need to follow up for us, so.
Whilst the law is someone's not going to come, people have gone to sell properties twenty years later, isn't it? Extende, it's extensions, but, um, anyways.
Now, how they ties up the.
Yeah, we, we think there's, um, no one slips through that net, is what I'm believing, but they'll get back to you, I'm sure. We've got it covered, okay?
Yeah.
Sounds like a good idea.
I, I, it was a trick.
All right, so we've got it, we've got a mover and seconder, uh, another question, go?
Just one question, so, um, should we be putting aside like a amount of, of money to offset the loss, the potential loss of the DCs? Would that be something that we should consider? Like, we've just given seven million to the central city. But they'd be consulting.
Which is incredible.
We were worried about misinformation.
We're trying to ensure we don't have a loss of DCs.
Why?
That's what, that's what our expectation is.
For the suburbs, where a lot of these granny flats would go, they won't, they won't get any, you know, they'll have to pay DCs. But if you're doing it in the central city.
You wouldn't be able to do this in your central setting.
Six story granny flat.
Makes a limited size, you've got to have at least two metres from, uh, a house, any other building, any metres from a, a dwelling, so, um, the likelihood of us happening in the central city is possible.
I'm trying to understand why, why would we be so worried about the DC, like, this is an even more housing for people in need? Yes. Why would we, we, we be so worried about getting the DCs compared to giving it to developers in the central cities?
It's basically a good point. It's like reading a dance submission. Yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you very much, um, we've got a mover and seconder, we'll put that motion, all those in favour? Thank you, that's Kerry. Right, Tyler, you're up.
Kato Kato, uh, I'm providing my last portfolio report in my term, and it's been eventful, to say the least, in the last two and a half years that I've had it. And saying that, I'm still keen on seeing the other portfolio reports. I also welcome at the table, um, Viviana Zanetti, who actually is, um, one of the leaders in the multicultural space, um, for our staff. And, um, I brought her to answer any questions, but I'd like to just highlight a couple of things on the report, um, which I believe were really important, and the first one is around the multicultural advisory group. Um, staff are undertaking a review at the moment, and there were recent discussions around the direction of the Meg moving forward. So the report's due to be coming to us in the, in the airways, uh, in August twenty twenty five. Um, the multicultural advisory group was different to the multicultural panel. The advisory group itself was, um, a, a group of, um, of leaders providing advice, particularly, um, for things of, um, of need, uh, of social need, and the direction is currently, um, being reviewed for that group. Um, well, cultural law, this is the next one that I wanted to talk about. There's a feasibility report that's been done, and I'm happy to circulate it, um, but within the report, there were some key recommendations regarding the future of the event. Uh, historically, it was, um, co-funded by both the Rickett and Community Board and the Waimata Community Board, so, Wai Pointa Community Board, Waimata Community Board, and it used to be, um, at, uh, Ray Blake Park. So, the twenty twenty six year is actually funded internally, thanks to some awesome agility from staff. Uh, but there is no future, um, that is to be seen after the twenty twenty six year, so we need to start thinking about that. Because it is a council-run event, and in my opinion, should stay a council-run event because it's fantastic. It brings thousands of people to be able to celebrate that. The next one was talking about the wider lens on multiculturalism, and the question is what does multiculturalism look like going into the future? And what role does council have in strengthening our communities and becoming a welcoming city for all people? Uh, we're currently looking at that, um, alongside Viviana and the rest of the team, around, um, funding, for example, around strengthening communities and priorities. The key priorities are around, um, strengthening those communities and welcoming everyone. There are also, um, some negative outcomes that could come, um, from, from these, um, funding pots. The last, um, part is the portfolios, and the, the question I've been asking myself is are they working? And the feedback that I've had with a lot of the community, particularly the multicultural one, is it's not. Uh, I'm only one person, and I've got to represent a whole wide range of people, uh, with different views, and also, uh, my time is limited, particularly in my role as a Rickett and councillor. So, uh, I just wanted to note that, and my ask is for the mayor and the mayor or candidates to reinstate the committees, uh, in the next election, and that's been put into a report for the annual plan from last year. So, my ask would be that the committees get reinstated, particularly the multicultural committee, because the portfolios, in my opinion, just aren't working, and I've got two, which is the youth and multicultural ones. Um, so I've got, I brought Viviana here to answer any questions that you may have. Um, so I've got, I brought Viviana here to answer any questions that you may have. Um, there is a lot in that report and happy to take them.
Far away, anyone?
A pretty good report.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your work.
Father Paul's work.
Yeah.
Yes. So you're great work, mate. That's sick. And we'll track to them here as well.
Congratulations.
We can just tell them.
When James says report, he'll kind of thank you as well. Don't worry, no one left behind.
He'll get well when he pays his money.
Portfolio of the jacket. Yeah, central city development. The irony. Um, I'm, Tyler's moving it obviously and.
I can't thank myself.
Yes, you can.
I'm moving. I do that all the time.
So all of those, well done, mate. All of those in favour? Against. Thank you. That's Kerry. And now, what is?
So I was going to say, we could agree on something today.
Do you not like the lovely photo of me at the court?
Yes, I'm all of us.
The one on the left or the person on the right? I'll, I'll just, I'll really, really quickly go down it. Um, all the work that the staff and contractors did on the, on the flood event was, was outstanding. And we've still got a few issues that we're working through. Uh, the coastal pathway, um, project, uh, won three, three different awards. Uh, so that was, that was excellent. Court Theatre, as you can see, that was very, very special to go to the opening night of that. And it is going, as my, Chris, um, Rob, Ross Gumley said to me, this is going to crack um, at this from worldwide because it's certainly a worldwide facility. Um, what else have we got? Um, uh, oh, Special Olympics, that's, um, that's coming here in December. And I went down and met a couple of the fourteen hundred athletes, athletes. And with all this support team that's coming, it's going to be sticking to eight thousand, maybe ten thousand people. I'm descending here in Christchurch in December. So that's, heaven help us if the metro sports isn't ready. That will cross that bridge when we come to it. Okay. And we went to the, uh, I went to the Raipaki school opening and Tyrone was there. And one thing I commented on in the little short speech I had at the start was this school was so nice and the view is so nice out the window. I would have learned absolutely less than what I learned at school. Bringing me out. It's a phenomenal little building, doesn't it? You know, it's. It was. It was outstanding. Outstanding. Um, had the High Commissioner of Papua New Guinea, which is good. And then I went to the multicultural centre again. We're very lucky to have that building and the China Fence Society. And also I'd just like to thank, um, Yanni on my behalf, who went for the council's behalf to, who went to the Rose of Tralies. So, uh, thank you, Yanni.
To be sure.
To be sure, to be sure. So with that, and you, you moved it, and anyone else can second it? All those in favour? Gates, thank you. That's carried. And here we go, character time.
Yeah. What you get, sorry.